I'm going to call to order a meeting of the Board of Selectmen for December 5th, 2016. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance and I'm going to invite Andrew and Abby LaCola right up here to the middle and they're going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. So you guys come right up, right up here. The flag is right over there.
And you dress so pretentious.
And you're just going to put your hand up? And you can face, you can face, you can face whoever you want. Ready? Andrew, you start it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of united states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, guys. First item on the agenda is going to be the approval of the minutes from November 14th, 2016. Do I have a motion? I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Minutes approved. Next, we have, again, this week, which is a very great honor to have another swearing in this week. We'll be swearing in our new lieutenant, Matthew LaCola. Chief? All yours, chief.
So Matt brought a large group today. Welcome to LaCola family. I just wanted to point out today that we did have a fairly serious fire today. Couple of families were affected, but this group here is working, had the fire today and because of their aggressive attack on the fire, it could have been much worse. So there is a business below that will be able to stay open. So I just wanted to point out to these, these guys today, what a great job they did today. Yeah, so. So Matt LaCola. Matt was hired July 26th, 2004. He became acting lieutenant August 11th of this year, this year 2016 and became permanent lieutenant November 14th, 2016. Matt has worked hard to attain this position. He's done a lot of professional development. He's got his associate degree in fire science and he's just recently completed his fire officer one program. So he's on his way to becoming a very good officer. So we welcome him as an officer and I think Joyce is going to take it from here.
Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Matthew LaCola.
Solely promise.
Solely promise.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
Sincerely.
Sincerely.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
That are incumbent upon me.
That are incumbent upon me.
As a lieutenant.
As a lieutenant.
In the North Andover Fire Department.
In the North Andover Fire Department.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Correct. Congratulations.
Good job.
You're beautiful children.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your service and we look forward to your continued service and your role as a permanent officer. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Billy, thank you. Thank you.
Good job.
I always thank you.
I texted you the phone.
Department moves out. We're going to take something out of order just a little bit. We're going to, we're going to take one licensing issue out of order because it's going to be a quick one and some of the others are a little bit longer. So we're going to take the application for Harry Canelos out of order so we can get, get that moving on. So can I have a motion to go into licensing, please?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're now in licensing.
We are in licensing. So we have in our agenda, if you look, actually it's at the last section on our agenda for licensing, Part D of Section 7 on the application of Harry and Canelos for a common victular and entertainment license for Bella's Inc. located at 1211 Osgood Street. Is Mr. Canelos here? He's here. So if you want to step forward, sir?
Good evening.
So we seem to have all of your paperwork in order. Do you want to tell us a little bit about your business?
I've been in the restaurant business since I was about 18 years old. Family business. I had a place in South Boston, which we recently sold and now I came to North Andover and I'd like to open a place in North Andover. We're almost done with the build-out, so here for licensing now.
And what type of food?
It's roast beef, pizza, seafood, subs, fast food.
10:00 PM every night. I think it's exciting to have you come. I don't know if there's any, any other questions from licensing board?
No.
Do I?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we move the Board of Selectmen, Acting License and Commissioners, support the common victular license and entertainment license for Bella's Inc. on 12, 1211 Osgood Street.
Second. Hearing a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None? Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Welcome to North Andover and Ms. Watson.
So we always, with new businesses, strongly encourage you to join our North Andover Merchants' Association. You can find it right online. It's a great organization, great for businesses, great for town and welcome to North Andover.
Thank you so much.
There's four members of this board.
Yes, who are members of that organization.
Don, she told me something about it.
Yeah, she's the president.
Yeah.
Wonderful. Good luck.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to close out of licensing.
Are we? No, suspending it.
No, we're suspended because we're going to work out again.
Oh, we're suspended, I'm sorry. All right, we'll suspend. Make a motion to suspend licensing.
Phil needs to make a motion. Phil second.
I'm the chair.
Oh.
I'll second this.
So you can make the motion?
I did.
Oh. I'm sorry. I didn't know what was happening.
Who's on first?
Who's on first?
I made a motion to suspend licensing.
And I seconded it in.
Second. Hearing a motion to suspend licensing and a second, all in favor of suspending the licensing?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry.
We have suspended licensing.
All right, we're going to go back into licensing later.
That's a long of this order.
But we wanted to just move that one along. Okay, next on the agenda, we're going to review the five-year financial forecast. The Town Manager has prepared a forecast covering FY '18 to '22, 2022. So, Mr. Manager?
Thank you. Seems like a long way away, 2022, but I guess when we first started doing this in 2012 and 2017, also seemed long away and that's where in the middle of 2012 now, I mean 2017, excuse me, in 2017 seems like it's come upon us pretty quick. I'm going to go through this faster than normal and really it's, want to talk about what's got us here and I think the opportunities for what brings us forward. Obviously, attached to the Selectmen's Minutes and the agenda is the packet. If anybody wants a copy, we'll post a copy onto the Town's website, but we'll quickly flash through the sides, but really, slides, but really tonight's an opportunity to talk about what's happening in the community and what we see moving forward. Again, this is one of these great slides and we're not going to spend any time on. This is the budget development process. It's part of the budget policy statement. It's posted online. If you are interested in each and every milestone that the community must take to get through the budget development process leading up to the anticipated May 16th Town Meeting, then certainly feel free to get a copy of, a hard copy of the document and go through it, but I won't bore you with it this evening. Most of what you see on the upcoming slide, in addition to the numbers, I've made an effort of including more quotes than normal, which I know Mr. Santilli appreciates, and all of them have a common theme and I think this is a good place to kick off relative to where we are. The quote at the bottom says, "You need people who can walk their companies into the future rather than back them into the future." And I think the thing that we have done very well as a community, Board of Selectmen, myself, school committee, school superintendent, finance committee who's here tonight, and all of the departments who have joined us in making sure that we've had consensus budgets over the years, is we've, we've staked the milestone. We've indicated where we wanted to be. We had goals along the way and then we've marched along that path very consistently and have been successful in getting to those milestones. Most notably in the last year, something that I think if we talked about 10 or 15 years ago is possible, we would have probably not spoken about as possible, and that is reaching a AAA bond rating, something that's never happened in the community since its history. And it really is about establishing a plan, talking about the future, making sure we own that, we're intellectually honest about it, we're transparent about what's in front of us in terms of both opportunities and constraints, and we just, we agree at some point along the line to make sure that we have a plan and we don't overstep those, that plan. That's really what these bullet points identify. They identify those larger categories that we are constantly challenged by, things like employee costs and debt service and revenue streams. As relates to the pro forma assumptions, in about three slides from now, we're going to show you what I project to be the financial forecast over the next five years. Those of you, by the way, who've been watching me do this for five years, recognize that there'll be a lot of red figures when we get there. But in anticipation of that, and we'll talk about that in a little bit in a couple of slides, that's out to give you over the next couple of slides, the assumptions that I've made going into the financial forecast. And it should, it should be noted that obviously for fiscal '18, which is the fiscal year we're talking about, fiscal '18 will be fairly realistic, pretty close to what we expect to happen with the help of the Revenue Fixed Cost Review Committee and others, internal staff. And as we get further out, fiscal '19 through fiscal '22, obviously we get a little more conservative about our estimates and therefore it drives the deficits up. But as is common, we're assuming an increase in tax levy of 2.5% plus new growth, making no further assumptions that we underspend the levy or request beyond the levy. The new growth has remained steady for many years now at $600,000. There are some years we cross over that and up north of $600,000 in times like this where I know Garrett is still working on getting us to the $600,000 figure, but we fairly regularly get to that number. We do have a couple of larger developments in the pipeline, which will make it a little easier to get to the $600,000, but they're not so substantial as relates to new tax growth that alter things dramatically. We always place in debt service schedule figures, which include the capital plan. So in two weeks, I'm going to present to board the five-year capital plan. That comes with a set of assumptions. The debt associated with those assumptions is already built into this plan, so we should expect that and it allows us to be somewhat conservative. So receipts, we're seeing receipt, some receipt growth. I know the Revenue Fixed Cost Review Committee this year, which included the superintendent, two members of the finance committee, Mr. Merely who's here, and Lynn Savage poured over those numbers to look at our local receipts to make sure that what we're grabbing from those receipts makes sense for us. This year, we're going to see a fairly aggressive growth compared to the last several years at 4.7%, largely driven by motor vehicle excise. Motor vehicle excise is moving in a good direction. It typically tells us the economy is getting better. People are buying new cars. They're turning over their cars more frequently. That's a sign of the overall economy, quite frankly, and it, and it, for us, it results in a, an increase in motor vehicle excise. We receive or collect more than $4 million in motor vehicle excise. It's our largest local receipt in the community. It's not even that close, quite frankly. I'm not excluding state aid and excluding traditional tax revenue, but of the local receipts, motor vehicle excise is our largest single receipt. The fiscal '18 state aid, this is the practice we've used along this plan of staying consistent from a financial perspective. We always start the year assuming that we're going to receive exactly the same amount of state aid as was approved as part of the state budget for the previous fiscal year. So we don't speculate that the governor in January will roll out a budget with new state aid. Quite frankly, given what we're hearing from the state, we're not quite sure what to expect from the state. They're suffering through some particular difficulties at the state level. So what we're seeing is municipalities are enjoying a little bit of an increase in tax revenues, where the state has, states have not seen that, which is a little unusual over the last couple of years that we've seen that. And from a transfer perspective, these are the movements from, from things like our enterprise funds into the general fund and we usually expect those at 2.5%. We've been showing this slide now for close to five years. It's a bellwether of sorts. It helps us understand and put in context. Again, Mr. Bowles is going to talk a little bit tonight about tax classification and the board will hear that this evening. The interesting part is it, it really shows what changed from the Great Recession, middle part of, of the 2000s into today. The fact that the taxpayer has taken on more and more of the burden of operating our government. And what we've been successful at, in terms of everything we've done, reserve policies, a facility master plan, AAA bond rating, not raising water and sewer rates, is also stabilizing that part of our revenue, which is coming from the taxpayer. And that has now remained stable since fiscal '14. It's only gone up 1% from fiscal '13 and it shows that we're understanding our revenue source and balancing where revenues are coming from as best we can and trying not to increase the taxpayer burden. So it's been at 77% now for what will be five fiscal years, which is a good sign, I think, from our perspective. These are the expense assumptions that are going to drive the slide that's two up from now. Health insurance, we're expecting to grow by 4.75%. That is a number which is historically lower than we were, say, for the 10 years from 2000 to 2011 or '12. We were seeing 8 to 15 to 18% growth. We're assuming this year a fairly modest health insurance growth of 4.75%. Health insurance represents the single largest expenditure we have that's not part of an operating budget. A health insurance is in excess of $10.5 million on a budget of about $90 million. So any percentage increase, quite frankly, in health insurance has a dramatic increase as years go on. So one of the changes that we made with the cooperation and support of the board and quite frankly, the labor unions, was moving into the GIC. It had an immediate impact of $3 million to the budget. And then the fact that by moving to the GIC, we've seen smaller and smaller increases compared to be, compared to where we were in self-funded. There's a slide a couple up from now that I think is really powerful in terms of understanding how significant the change has been. We're also seeing some change through what we call the PEC agreement, the agreement we have with our employee unions and the retirees, that we've been able to make some changes to that agreement, so we're expecting more modest increases in health insurance. So again, we've talked about debt service to a certain extent. You'll see on the debt service slide that the debt exclusion primarily associated with the purchase of Stevens Estate is starting to peel off and will begin to do so in fiscal '19. That's excluded or override related debt. You'll see that to start to peel off, but you'll also see the general debt service over the five-year period is starting to decline. You remember, you may remember that we made a conscious effort to be more conservative about our borrowing, so we reduce the cost of debt service and that's been one of our items that have driven positive budgetary results. So as we get into the individual departments, I would expect, I'm going to, you should expect as you see the budget, that general government spending for fiscal '18 will not exceed 3.75%. May recall, last year's increases were approximately 3.7%. We're also assuming after next year for the four years that precede that, we're going to see 3.5% growth. As relates to support services, which are really a lot of those central combined services we have with the school department, modest growth of 3%. There are some items, what we've agreed to for many years now is that we would try certain consolidated services. We've done well in IT as an example. We've done well with purchasing, been real success stories, facilities, and then we've been trying other things to see if they fit the model. Sometimes they will, sometimes they won't. Sometimes the nature of how schools operate will be different than how we operate, but we'll continue to try those items and we'll continue to maintain a level of support services, again, primarily centralized around purchasing IT and facilities. So you'll see an increase, very modest increase of 3%. School department, I've already conveyed to the superintendent that the expectation for their budget increase in '18 will be 4%. That's up from 3.7% the previous year and then we're going to assume in the pro forma 3.5%. You see the consistency? I'm assuming every department, every operating department from fiscal '19 to fiscal '22 will increase by 3.5%. Then we get to next year, we'll take a look and see if that's the most accurate number. Of additional note is that with agreement with the Revenue Fixed Cost Review Committee, we've taken a particular line item, the Medicaid reimbursement, which is something the schools in every district apply for and typically falls to the general fund. And I've agreed to, in essence, bring that revenue stream to zero and use those dollars to recommend to this board and to the Town Meeting that we create a revolving fund. To use, to put into that revolving fund will be the Medicaid funds, on average 200,000. It can be anywhere between 175 and 250, quite frankly, or more, dedicated specifically to purchase curriculum. Curriculum, so we're going to create a curriculum fund, not unlike the sped fund we've created in the past. It really allowed us direct dollars. We recognize and have heard from the superintendent the need to invest regularly in curriculum and sometimes that curriculum gets lost with no criticism to anybody within the context of a $43, $45 million school budget. So we're going to set those dollars aside, recommend the creation of a revolving fund, have the Medicaid dollars go directly into the revolving fund and they'll be earmarked specifically by the superintendent for curriculum-related activities within the school department, which we think, again, thinking somewhat outside the box, not unlike the sped stabilization fund, this is another creative option to make sure we're dedicating or directing dollars to specific purposes. State assessments with those charges from the state and other non-departmental, again, they've been going up a little more aggressively than we've seen other categories. We are seeing growth on higher than average, meaning higher than 3% or 4% in the areas of the two vocational schools. All it takes is one additional student into the vocational school and we typically see a $15,000 or $20,000 increase. With the opening of the Essex Aggie, we've seen a few more students transfer into that district and as a result, we're seeing those dollars increase. We're managing that. We think over time that will label, level out and come down, quite frankly, but we've seen an increase in the last couple of years in, in the number of students. Still not a substantial number of students, by the way, but every student is costing us between 15,000 and 20,000. So it's, it's when one student ends up there, it's not inconsequential. Public Works, again, is going to accept to be, expect to be increased by 4% in '18 and 3.5% after that. And public safety, police and fire would expect the same. Okay, this is really small, right? So we'll see if we can make this a little larger if we can. I don't know if we can read that. Who has good eyes? I know everybody can see the red at the bottom. Hopefully that's helpful. So over the next five years, the anticipation, so this first red column, the one, so 800, the bottom line on the left represents this year. So that represents what the budget looked like when we exited Town Meeting in May. We had $800 to play with and obviously as the year goes on, it'll be better than that, but that's how we exited Town Meeting. The next, number next to that, the negative 378,000, increasing to negative 1.2, 2.5, 3.7 and then 4.7, represent the projections at this point for fiscal '18 through fiscal '22. For those who have been here, for the five years that I've been here, you recognize these look remarkably similar to what happens on each and every year. Last year, I think at this point, we were projecting a current year or next year deficit in the 360 range and now it's 378. By the third year, I think we were assuming a deficit of around 2.7, now it's 2.5. That's not to minimize the significance of seeing red figures in a possible budget. It's just to tell you that this is a function of being relatively conservative about how we project items and to make sure that we're paying attention, right? That if we got really aggressive, this assumes largely 3.5% budgetary growth after fiscal '18. That's not, it's reasonable growth, right? It's not, we're not projecting 7% increase. We're not expecting anything of a dramatic fashion and yet it still means that each and every year, we need to pay attention to what's happening in that year, find creative ways to add revenue and reduce costs to address these kinds of deficits as the years further out. Have you noticed health insurance of particular note, if you can see the small print, it's the second line item down on the far right. It's still projected to be by '22, nearly 14.4 million and this year it's close to 10.5. So you can see how something as large as health insurance can have a real impact if we don't continue to monitor it and this is one of the things that is really adversely impacting many communities who haven't taken aggressive stances as we have. One of the items that, moving forward as relates to this, I'm going to shrink this back. This gives you a sense of the allocation between the departments. I can tell you from one year to the next or even from the last, over the last three to five years, the percentages have not changed dramatically. You've seen debt service decline by 1% or so and I just expect it to decline somewhat further as time goes on, but the rest of the allocation between departments has remained largely the same. For those who struggle with the size of this to some extent, school departments represent 49%. That's pure school spending, not the vocational schools, not allocating other costs to schools. General government represents 5%, public safety 11% and as you can see, group health 12%. So we spend more on group health insurance than we do on public safety, giving you a sense of how group, group health can have a real impact on the budget. Under other personnel benefits, the other category or the other line item we don't call out, but is really relevant, is the retirement costs. So our charges to the Essex Regional Retirement System this year will be approximately, just, I think, just south of 4.4 million. It goes up approximately $400,000 every year. So every year, we're increasing our retirement contribution by, again, 10% of that appropriation, which is significant.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
Does the group health include all households, including schools?
Yes.
And retirees?
And retirees, yeah. And school retirees. So just leading on the retirement piece for a minute, showing you from the latest actuarial study where we anticipate retirement costs to go, again, this is run by the Essex Regional Retirement System. This is not school folks, school teachers, school staff that are part of the state teachers' retirement system. This is municipal folks and other folks who don't fall into the state teachers' retirement. And we're expecting our retirement cost to go from current costs of just under $5 million, I'd say it's actually closer to $4,400,000 this year, to another that's over $7 million by fiscal '26. And one of those costs, again, like health insurance for us, we really have to be mindful of that. We don't manage a lot of this outcome. The state defines that we need a fully funded system. I forget what the year now is, might be 2035, it has to be fully funded by. So the state tells to the retirement system exactly what, how fast you have to fund the system and then it's somewhat based on the market returns. Market returns have been somewhat modest over the last couple of years, which makes these appropriations grow, but it's something we need to continue to pay attention to. So it's one of my favorite slides. This shows since 2015 through 2025, the upper line represents where health insurance was going to be if we had never switched to the GIC and the lower line represents where health insurance is expected to be based on the fact we're now participating in the GIC. And the narrative says a lot, says a lot more than the lines on the page and that is that if, if these numbers hold true, we will have avoided $12.8 million in health insurance costs, which is doing, is, is the substantial driver behind allowing us to increase budgets 3.5, 3.7, 4% a year. Just wouldn't be able to do it. The additional benefit to this, we've talked a lot about OPEB, other post-employment benefits. OPEB is one of those things that is having a lot of conversation, state, local and federal level, whether or not we're going to be required to fund OPEB moving forward. Our OPEB liability, and we're going to get this wrong as well, is somewhere in the $86 million range. Prior to the change to the GIC was $119 million. So the health insurance change has an operating benefit, operating budget benefit, but also there's a benefit of driving our OPEB liability down, in this case by something north of $30 million and it's important as we proceed. Okay, try to figure this one out a little bit. I, I think this is the summary of what we want to talk about over the last several years and really tells us a little bit about what we expect moving forward. So it has been our long-range strategic planning that has allowed us to juggle everything that sits above that line. The point of the fulcrum under AAA is that's a AAA bond rating. And the AAA bond rating was a result of holding to financial reserve policies, creating budget surpluses, making sure that we're able to create a long-range vision for the bond rating agency so they felt we were capable of being sustainable in what we do. And all of those items represent the sort of pulls or any one of them could create a tipping point relative to our decision-making. So the employee benefits pull on that, we're constantly needing to manage that. One year alone, we had a $2 million snow and ice deficit. We had to manage through that particular deficit in some years and so some of these represent opportunities, like creating curriculum funds and others represent real challenges in making sure that we keep things going. Ultimately, the, the message for tonight is we've done a really great job as a team bringing this entity forward to the point that we are financially sustainable, that we can make really quality decisions around. We're talking today about having a second facility master plan. I think five years ago, we didn't, we didn't know enough about the existing facility master plan, let alone whether it's going to happen, but we've opened four buildings in four years. We'll open a fifth next year, hopefully a sixth the year after that and a seventh the year after that and then we're already talking about the next round of facility improvements. And I think all of that comes from staying balanced, from making, not making decisions that may be in the short term feeling really great, but in the longer term means it throws[1654.07] So it has been our long-range strategic planning that has allowed us to juggle everything that sits above that line. The point of the fulcrum under AAA is that's a AAA bond rating, and the AAA bond rating was a result of holding to financial reserve policies, creating budget surpluses, making sure that we're able to create a long-range vision for the bond rating agency so they felt we were capable of being sustainable in what we do. And all of those items represent the sort of pulls, or any one of them could create a tipping point relative to our decision-making. So the employee benefits pull on that, we're constantly needing to manage that. One year alone, we had a $2 million snow-and-ice deficit. We had to manage through that particular deficit in some years, and so some of these represent opportunities, like creating curriculum funds, and others represent real challenges in making sure that we keep things going. Ultimately, the message for tonight is we've done a really great job as a team, bringing this entity forward to the point that we are financially sustainable, that we can make really quality decisions around. We're talking today about having a second facility master plan. I think five years ago, we didn't know enough about the existing facility master plan, let alone whether it's going to happen, but we've opened four buildings in four years. We'll open a fifth next year, hopefully a sixth the year after that, and a seventh the year after that, and then we're already talking about the next round of facility improvements. And I think all of that comes from staying balanced, from making, not making decisions that may be in the short term feeling really great, but in the longer term means it throws us off our game. So I think this is the point of this slide. These are really small print, but just to give you a summary and wrap it up, '09 through '12, the total increases in our budgets were negative 1%. So from fiscal '09 to fiscal '12, our budgets increased a negative 1%. From '13 to '17, the average increase per year was 3.76%, and this year, on average, I'm recommending an increase of 4%. And that's not showing any, it's really showing paying attention and making sure we stay within our lane and don't make really decisions, again, that feel good in the short term. These are some of the other initiatives we've been able to accomplish while still accomplishing that. It costs us $680,000 in one-time dollars to roll out a full-day free kindergarten. That program is a huge hit. It's turned into exactly what the school's district expected, and the revenue we've received from the state each and every year has fully cost-recovered the cost of that program. It is an asset to the community in any way that you look at it. We've generated ESCO savings. We continue to use that. We created a sped stabilization. We're a third in the Commonwealth to do that. We've managed a snow-and-ice deficit. So if I had told you in '05 that we'd have a $2 million deficit and we wouldn't require any department to stop spending in the year we had a $2 million deficit, you would have thought I was crazy, and I would have thought I was crazy too. But two years ago, we covered, or three years ago, we covered a $2 million deficit without asking departments to alter their spending habits in that particular year. The same year, or two years later, we covered a school deficit of $391,000 at the end of the year. We've been able to reallocate rent expense. We have a capital stabilization fund, and we're managing both the facility master plan and the OPEB stabilization fund. Whoop, could be smaller first. So again, we won't spend any time, I've been here too long. So the future looks like this. Everybody has been reading about and hearing about the prospect that we may be modifying or maybe looking at a modification of the facility master plan specifically around the initiative this year proposed for school classroom expansion. I'm waiting for the school committee to make a final decision before I make a recommendation back through the capital plan, but there's a real possibility that we'll be looking at modifying the facility master plan in a way very positive to the school district, and we'll see what happens over the next couple of weeks. We continued funding our OPEB liability within the budget and through other resources, and we're now planning for a second facility master plan to begin somewhere in the 2020-21 range. That's likely to be somewhere in the range of four or five projects, between $10 and $12 million, and will include upgrades, again, depending on the action of the school committee, to three elementary schools and major renovations to Fire Station 2, which is the last on the municipal list. And finally, we're looking at an extension of the PEC agreement, which is the agreement we have with employee unions for health insurance, to make sure that's due to expire in '19?
'19.
'19. So we're looking to renew that agreement and continue that relationship moving forward. Okay, I wrote this last year. I guess I'm sort of caught up with my own ability to say something that made some sense, so I repeated it again this year. But it continues to be what our focus is. So we just want to make sure that we maintain the focus of what we've always planned on. We put it down on paper. We look more than the current year. We look out three to four or five years. We get an honest dialogue about what we're trying to accomplish in the community. We find a reasonable way to do that, and we accomplish it. We don't get too far off track. We don't get ridiculous about what our expectations are. This is a wonderful community. Quite frankly, we have a lot to offer, and we feel in the end that we're moving that community forward, but we're doing so in a way that the community embraces because we're transparent about what we do and we deliver on the expectations we have. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, again, as usual, a very thorough presentation, and you're both uplifting and a little bit conservative as we go forward. So I think, you know, you've covered a lot of information tonight in a lot of different areas. I'll open it up to the board for questions or comments.
So on Slide 9. If you go back, that's the one that showed all those great numbers in red. I had only been through this through last year, and I don't remember this portion of the presentation with all the larger red numbers. And I just wanted to ask, I mean, because we're talking about FY '18 right now, and this estimate has us operating at a deficit of $378,000, and I know that you said you wanted to make us aware of how it could end up looking one year, two year, up to five fiscal years away from now. What do we as a board and what do we as a town have to do in order to make sure that that number meets zero or more than zero as opposed to $378,000 less?
It's a great question. I think that it really means that we continue along the path we're doing, that if there's a new, that if there's a program or a process or a service delivery or service expectation that we're going to change, that we have an honest discussion about the cost and the return on investment for doing that. I think what we have in place is the ability every year to have reasonable growth, whether we talk about that at 3.5% going forward. That doesn't mean that if we promote 3.5%, we're going to end up with this $4 million deficit. It means that things change between this year and year '22, and that what would really change is that if we alter dramatically the service levels we expect without an ability to understand that there's going to be a change in revenue. I feel comfortable we can resolve the fiscal '22 problem based on the traditional path we follow. Conservative about revenue, get a little more realistic as we get closer to that date, expect some level of revenue growth, not only just local receipts but also state receipts, but not necessarily budget for them until we see them. That's what's not in here, and that we continue to find ways to either generate revenue or reduce other unwanted expenses. What changes that is not the routine. What changes that is saying, I want this new, you know, shiny new object, this new way of doing things, and that has a cost which hasn't historically fit in the traditional model of the system. So if it's an operating cost, and I don't have a particular idea to one of those, but if I have an operating cost which exceeds dramatically, and I focus less on the fixed cost than the operating cost, so we're seeing budget increases between 3.5% and 4% in this plan. If someone came forward with a service which added 10% to a particular budget, a particular department as an example, not some of the smaller departments but the larger ones, we couldn't afford that. That will make sure that that $4 million number is $4 million in five years. If we stay steady in the traditional growth of 3.5% to 4% of the same time period, I'm very, very comfortable that that number will look like $348,000 or $378,000 five years from now.
So even though for the, because right now, we're in December of 2017, so in the next, I mean, next four months, we'll be approving an FY '18 budget. I mean, is that a normal number, that $378,000 at this point in the process?
Like I said, last year, I don't, I pulled it up in front of me. Last year, it was in the, somewhere between 340 and 360 as a deficit at the same time.
What changed last year that allowed that number to close?
It's fairly conservative revenue projection. So for instance, we may know something may change. At the end of January, the governor will roll out his budget. Maybe the state budget changes as relates to state aid and goes up $150,000. There's, you know, about 40% of it. So we don't anticipate that in advance. That's one of the things we've changed in terms of being conservative about an approach. We'll have final health insurance numbers. It's possible that that health insurance number may average 4%. If it averages 4% instead of 4.75, which are projected, you're talking about a $10 million number, that's going to close most of the gap. There are other revenue sources we continue to monitor, and so what happens from when the Revenue Fixed Cost Review Committee approves the revenue side and the fixed costs is some things may change. It gives us more time to pay attention to what's happening on the revenue side, and then we'll start to get budget requests back. Just because I say to a budget, this is a little different with the schools, quite frankly, and public safety and pure honesty. If I say 4%, I'm actually expecting a 4% budget, right? Because their costs are different, and 4% is 4%. When I get to some of the operating departments, myself, my own department, could be the clerk's department or support services department, we may say 4%, but what they may need to operate is 3.5% to while maintain the services. We don't just fill the gap and get to that 4% as an example. So when we get the actual budgets back, we'll refine those budgets or look at the budgets to make sure that we meet. But I have, I have no concerns that we'll be able to meet that figure.
Okay.
Yep. And I can tell you, if you lined up last year's forecast and the previous year's forecast and the previous year's forecasts underneath each other, they would look remarkably similar.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? All right, Mr. Mailer, thank you very much for your visit.
Are we going to tax classification next?
We are going into public hearing, yes.
Okay, is that a hearing? Because I'll kick that off if you want to, if you want to open the hearing, then have Garrett do his thing.
Communication.
Oh, okay, yeah, let's, I'm sorry. Let's finish on communications and announcements. I think we have some communications and announcements that we want to get out there. Thank you for that presentation. So does anybody have any communications and announcements they want to?
I do. I do. I'd like to just take this opportunity to announce that I will not be seeking a fourth term. Not that I haven't already been outed, but I figured that I would formally announce that I will not be seeking a fourth term to the board with my new job, and my son will be entering high school next year and being recently appointed to community preservation and still sitting on the Affordable Housing Trust, and again, with the new position. It's time for me to dedicate some of my time elsewhere. But it's been a great nine years, and I am certainly going to miss the people I've served with and the people I've served for. And I can't say much, or I'll cry, so that's it. Thanks.
Although we have some more meetings with you before.
Yes, yes.
I'll be the first to thank you so much for your service on this board and the nine years of dedicated service that you've given to this board.
Thanks.
And it is a lot of time and a lot of effort.
That it is.
Away from your family, and we really appreciate it.
A lot of phone calls.
And a lot of phone calls, so we really appreciate it, and we've got a few more meetings.
We do have a few more meetings. I'm not gone till March, but figuring now December's a good time to put it out there.
But you still can change your mind.
Well, I don't know. I don't know about that, but we never say never. No, no, I'm not changing my mind this year, but.
Well, it's nice of you to give everyone a heads up, and again, we'll save all our lovely comments for another time, but you've had a good one.
I have. Thank you.
Okay, so that was kind of a blockbuster announcement. Any other communications or announcements?
Not really.
Just different. It was, you know, we don't get those every month.
Yeah, we don't.
I have one, that the Stevens Estate is having an open house, and I'm trying to find the date on here. It's not, it is.
16th, 17th, and 18th.
Okay, yeah, thank you. It's not on this flyer, but, okay, so 16th, 17th, and 18th, and they're having all kinds of great events, and it's going to be all decorated beautiful, and some of the local merchants, cakes by design, edible art, consignment, bridal, and prom. I believe it's Good Day Cafe, events by Ellen, Joe Fish and the Loft. So free refreshments, and it's a great opportunity. If you haven't seen the Stevens Estate, go up there and see what a great facility we have, and the kids are invited. There's activities for them, too. And I think, let me see, did I have anything else? Oh, no, no, no.
No.
Another one. Especially because he's here. Great job on the parade.
Yeah.
It was fantastic.
He did a nice job.
Really was. Awesome.
It was a really, it was a really nice job, and the tree lining was great, so it was it was.
And the breakfast yesterday, if you didn't get to see it, EJ was making, Lieutenant Foles was making pancakes and sausages yesterday to a crowd of many that got to see Santa Claus as well, so it was a fun time, a very fun time in the area. A lot of good things going on.
Busy nine days for those volunteers.
Oh, sure, yeah.
I mean, you guys jammed three events, and you looked great doing it, EJ. You still look great. Look at this. You've just really committed yourself to this.
And in between, you had a live pulling of the market basket and the live pulling of the winners, and yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Lots of effort. Thank you.
Didn't go unnoticed.
It was Saturday morning.
Yeah.
What was it?
The shopping spree was Saturday.
The Saturday.
It hasn't gone unnoticed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, any other communications or announcements? Okay, we're going to move next to the property tax classification. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Move to open a public hearing on property tax classification.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are now in the property tax classification.
You're leaving.
Mr. Cappella, we'll get.
He's done that before.
If anybody wants a copy of the handout, I have them here.
Maybe we'll want a copy.
You can pass them around.
Yeah, we all got one.
Well, behind me.
Well, behind you, okay.
Go ahead, Will.
Grab this. Hobble out of your way here.
Garrett, you can sit at the, you sit at the table if you want, or stand at the podium, whatever you more comfortable with.
I'm just sorry, I got to get this thing moving.
Okay.
I have one titanium knee, and I'm going to get another one soon, so I'll be the bionic assessor.
I like that one.
Well, I'm, I have, and I made some late today revisions that were requested where I add some analysis to the quartile formula. I hope you got that. It's in that pile there. But basically, if you haven't seen this handout before, just to refresh your recollection, what I do every year is sort of walk you through Proposition 2.5 with this year's numbers. And as you go down the page, we start out with how much the, you start out with the fiscal '16 levy limit, add the 2.5%. This is right from a document you get from the Department of Revenue. It's pre-calculated every year. This year's new growth was a little under the $600,000, it was $570,000, so it represents about 0.86% of the fiscal '16 levy. That gives you the levy limit, which is kind of a misnomer because what that means is it means that's what's raised below an override on the tax rate. And added to that is the culmination of the remaining debt service for all of your overrides from the past, however many there are that still are being serviced. And that had, if you kept these handouts, you see that that's been going down. So when you add those two together, you get the total maximum allowable tax levy, which is $70 million to $623,079. Now, what follows is essentially a basic division problem. You take the amount of money you want to raise from real and personal property taxation, and you divide it by the total value of that property, and it gives you a tax rate. Now, in the case of not having a split, and so that's why I start out with, on page one, with no split, because when you do that, you end up with a single tax rate for all classes of property. And what the 1523 means is that's how much of a tax rate per thousand you'd have to have to raise the $70 million, $623,079 against a $4.638 billion tax base. And if you go on to the next page, I have last year's totals for property values, this year's estimated totals. You can see how much of a change there was from a percentage basis. We had a revale last year, and we had to do an interim year adjustment this year. And we're required and have been since fiscal 2005 to review the values every year, and we have to meet the statutory certification statistics every year. And believe it or not, there were a couple of classes where we, at least on the sales, we didn't, and we had to make adjustments upward. One of them was commercial condominiums, which are done based on their sales prices, so they had to be tweaked up a little bit to get within the tolerances that the Department of Revenue wants. So you do a lot of, you do a lot of stats work, and you report it all on one page called the LA 15. And unlike the revale year where you do the same type of work, but you fill out copious amounts of paperwork and forms, it's still a lot of work to get it where they want it to go. And everything is uploaded now on the state website, so there's these internal audit programs and everything, so it's, it's actually pretty efficient. This year, I got, when I uploaded the values, the growth, and the LA 15, which is the interim year adjustment report, I got approved in four hours. It's kind of like a new record for me, but I felt pretty good about that. So anyway, what would happen on that second page at the bottom, if you decided to go back to a single tax rate, you'd notice that there would be a significant drop in the tax rate per thousand for commercial and industrial personal property and a increase of about 96 cents for the residential, and that's basically where you're at now. Right now, you're at a level of 36, 1.36. Now, this year, I was asked to do two estimates. One was 1.35, and then 1.36. So the next two pages are exactly like the first one, the same valuation information and levy information, but what they do is they show you how the rates calculate at those two levels of a shift. And as you can see, because of the actual size of the residential tax rate base compared to the commercial, industrial, and personal property base, there isn't a one-to-one relationship. So if you go 35% shift on the commercial, industrial, personal property, that only shifts off about 5% off the residential as a whole, and that has a lot to do with the fact that the percentage of the value of residential And that has a lot to do with the fact that the percentage of the value of residential property, residentially taxed property, as a percentage of your whole tax base is so large compared to the other two together. And when I say residentially taxed, for the benefit of people who may not be aware, you can be a commercial property and still be subject to the residential tax rate. And the most glaring example of that are apartment buildings. They're statutorily, even though they're purely commercial enterprises, they are by law subject to the residential tax rate. So one of your biggest taxpayers is Royal Crest, and they get the residential rate. They also get the residential exemption on the CPA. It's a drop in the bucket, but it's there. I know, but that's...
Is that legislation?
You have to change Chapter 59, Section 59.
So that's...
The classification. You have to change the classification statute in Chapter 59.
Which means going to our legislators?
Which means going to the state legislature and saying, and I think, I understand where you're coming from.
You know exactly where I'm going with this.
Yeah, I know where you're going from. And I think you have, you probably won't be successful because of the vested interests of keeping it there. And in fact, the, see, you have to understand something about real estate tax laws and exemptions are solely creatures of special interests that, for instance, if you're a daycare center, commercial daycare, you have to use the residential rate. I had to create a code to put in the appraisal system. The state finally came up with one, but we had to basically trick the tax billing system to give it... First, we had to, the first year it happened, we abated them, the difference between the two rates on the daycare centers, because they were entitled by law to get the residential rate, even though they're a business.
So even a freestanding daycare center?
Yep, because they went to the legislature. They went to the legislature, and they got themselves included under that. And that's, it's amazing. If you go through that, you know, draconian, you know, looking at someone who studied Latin for ten years, and I have difficulty reading this stuff, it's almost incomprehensible, but it's been amended so many times. But there's stuff like that in there, and daycare centers are one of them. And the point I guess I'm trying to make is if you can't get the daycare center changed, you're probably not going to get all those apartment buildings changed. Because imagine what would happen in a place like Boston if the apartment buildings got shifted over to a 1.75 rate, you know? Anyway, so that, so it's not, it's worth looking into. It's worth looking into.
Maybe we should put that on when we draft our letters to our legislators. It's just something for them to look at.
It's not a bad idea.
I mean, other things we put on that we know they're not going to do anything, but it's not bad idea to remind them.
So at any rate, the next two sets of information is simply calculating the same numbers at a tax shift of 1.35, and then calculating at 1.36. And then, when you get to the page that nobody can read, including me, that's where I have all of the rates. It's, when I first developed this, I was able to read it, but, you know, that's, I changed my glasses about four times since then. But this chart here will let you look down and see all the possible tax rates that you're allowed under the current classification statute. Now, North Andover can only go up to 150%. So right now, you're at one point, I believe, 1.36. So if, what I usually do is I'll put a little highlighted line across the last shift that was adopted by the board, so they can get some idea of, you know, as a reference point.
Basically, this is the jumping off point where the selectmen had their conversations with beginning in fiscal thirteen. The selectmen looked at this eye chart of a document and decided that, at least, again, they're not wedded to that, but based on the conversation that first began in fiscal thirteen, said that they did not want to make the percentage relationship between commercial and residential any different. They wanted to leave that. So values can change every year. Values will change every year, and those values will never be the same. Residential and commercial will not go up exactly the same. And so there, the discussion at the time in fiscal thirteen was, how do we in fiscal fourteen, and fifteen, and sixteen, and so on, keep the relationship between the business or the commercial rate and the residential rate the same as it relates to the percentage of the total levy that we raise? And that last year led the board to a 1.36 shift. This year, the reason that Garrett has provided you two is that, quite frankly, there's not a heck of a lot of difference between 1.35 and 1.36 this year. Both comply with what the board spoke about in thirteen. They leave the percentage approximately the same. In terms of dollars, the shift we're talking about is taking $3 million of the levy and moving it from the residential side to the commercial side, a little over $3 million. And last year, that number was approximately, I'm gonna, I forget, I don't have it directly in front of me, between $3,400,000 and $3,300,000. And that's where the 1.35 and 1.36 also sort of come out at. So it's consistent with what the board has done in the past. I'm not saying the board has to do that going forward, but it's consistent with what the board has done in the past. Either one of these choices is consistent with how the board has done things since thirteen.
The numbers are really close. From the 1.35 and 1.36, it's just, it's usually not this close.
No. And I would say the 1.35 is closer in terms of the dollar value of shift to last year. The 1.36, the percentage is right in between, but the dollar value is closer to the 1.35.
Can I ask you, Garrett, have you seen, in years past, we saw some real activity in changing numbers for condos and multifamilies? I think you said earlier, seeing that it's, all of it seems to stabilize. There's not any sort of red herrings.
Last year, it was funny. I had to lower the three families.
The what? Say that again.
The three families.
The three families. You had to lower that?
For the, yes, they, the initial factors I put on them were higher than the sales prices in the ratio studies. The four, the two families I had to raise. This year, the three families took off.
You know why? Because people are looking to condo.
They want rental.
They're condo-ing them, and there's value now. The investors are stepping in.
So this year, and you heard it here first, I apologize to people that own three-family homes, but you had to go up. The ratio came in about eighty-five, and they had to go above ninety. That's the minimal.
But the comps bared it out.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. I just wanted to point something out. I was asked to add two more boxes on my last page. We have all the quartiles. There's, I had a median analysis I've had in the past, comparing the median increases in the single-family homes and the difference in taxes for two years. I've added the medians for commercial, industrial, without chapter land, and the median for commercial and industrial without chapter and mixed use. Now, chapter land is farmland, forestry. It's very low values, but it's taxed at the commercial rate. It's just a function of the agricultural exemption laws. The mixed-use property are properties that have both a commercial use and a residential use, and they're taxed depending on the percentage of the property that's each used by the respective tax rates. The thing that, first of all, the thing you'll notice when you see those medians is they're significantly lower than the residential. And that's because there's a lot fewer commercial, even with, even with chapter land and mixed use, you're talking about maybe 790 properties, and in the residential side, you're talking about close to 9,000. So the median would be much higher. So what happens, it's, it's not exactly apples to apples. If you care to, I can send you the spreadsheets. But when you go down the spreadsheets, if you're moving in a range, that's the medians that, you know, row number three hundred instead of row number forty-five hundred, it doesn't take very many rows for you get a significant change in what could be the median. And that's why I think that in the case of the CNI without chapter, one of the things we did was we, there was a range of condominiums, I said before, commercial condominiums, that we actually changed. We tweaked them up a little bit. And the thing about the CNI without chapter is there's an extra, because of the mixed use, there are more of those than there are of the others. So when you're moving down that scale, you're going to end up, the median changed about $20,000 in that particular category, but it didn't change that much for the other. And I think that has to do with the fact that you'd have to look at the spreadsheet to see. But you're not, you're moving down a range of things where you're going, you have fewer increments, so you don't have to go very, move very far to get a significant change.
To go to Smithy Ellis' question, in either one of the sort of summary slides, the value change of median single-family houses, twenty thousand and six. The value change of median commercial, industrial with CNI without chapter?
Without the chapter land.
Is twenty thousand one hundred.
Yeah.
So the value changes are within a couple hundred dollars.
Right.
Compared to last year, where the value changes were more direct.
And when you add the chapter land, there isn't much of a change, but you're adding a lot more properties that are basically not worth much, but they increase your range that you're calculating a median over.
Let me ask you, please don't give me the negative of this. So do you see any neighborhoods outpacing other neighborhoods? Please don't tell me neighborhoods that are not doing, I don't want, I don't want to do that, because that's not fair to the people that live in those neighborhoods. Are you seeing neighborhoods or style of homes that are outpacing perhaps some of the others?
Capes.
Yeah. We talked about this before.
Yes. And the high-end neighborhoods, the high-end houses are not selling as well, at least...
But they're selling.
They're selling.
Yes. I don't want people with high-end homes all panicking. They are selling.
If you have a very expensive home, it takes longer to sell it, and there's fewer people that can buy it.
It's to be expected.
That's to be expected. When the market started coming back, the capes were the first to take off. Because when you think about it, their design, most of them have, from a square footage standpoint, pretty much the same utility as a colonial home that's with the same footprint, but they don't cost as much. So there's a competition for them. And the condominiums. There were some condominiums that I had to adjust, and they weren't the expensive ones. There were some of the more modest condominiums that I had to give a little tweak to this year, because they're just taking off.
They are taking off. Even more so probably next year.
I think that's what people have difficulty understanding.
Well, that's why I'm asking it.
You're targeting markets when you look at all of them.
No, that's why I'm asking it, because I pretty much knew what you were going to say, but to help people at home when they go, what happened? But it's the good news, bad news. The good news is, your property value went up. The bad news is, so did your tax bill, that you're outpacing perhaps some...
And it's not, it's a function of the fact that we're required to review this. And if you really want to be fair about it and keep within those statutory parameters and have assessment equity, you have to adjust the ones that are outside of the state tolerance levels. It's just the way it is. Or they won't, they won't. I'll tell you right now. If we, if I turned in ratio studies and I didn't change some of these things, they wouldn't approve it.
Right, you have to be within 10%.
Yeah.
Now, having said that, and I say this, and I know you're going to flinch, if anybody, and please give me the date.
That's all right.
You know where I'm going.
I've been flinching for a long time.
If anybody has concern about their taxes or their reevaluation or whatever of them going up, you have a certain date you must file.
Yes, you have to.
If you miss that date, you are out of luck.
Right.
So that date, again, Garrett, is...
You have till February first.
And that's a state law.
That's a state law. February first of two thousand and seven.
To file your abatement, and if you did it last year, does not mean that you cannot, that you should not do it again this year.
Well, every year is a new year. The, if you're filing, if you're filing an appeal, if you filed an appeal last year just on valuation, and you were given a reduction or an abatement because of the market conditions last year, you probably didn't get it carried over. Now, if you, if, one of the things we do as a matter of course is check the property. Now, if something, if we found out that you were being assessed for something that wasn't there, or, you know, there was something that, you know, maybe it was graded too high or something like that, we're going to change that description. So that's going to get factored into the new value. But if it was merely a discretionary decision on the part of the board where they decided that there was a market adjustment in order, it may not be carried over, because the market changes. We're looking at a whole new set of sales with a whole new tax date for this coming, this fiscal year. And the tax date, just to make sure people understand this, the tax date is January first of two thousand and sixteen, so it's essentially sales activity that occurred in calendar two thousand and fifteen.
Okay. I'm done. My usual questions.
Any other questions from the board?
Okay.
Okay, we'll open up for, we're still in a public hearing, so we'll open up for public if there's anyone in the public that would like to. Mr. Koppinger, come on up.
There it is. Hello, everybody.
I will.
Time again. I've been doing this for like sixteen or seventeen years with you folks, so thank you for welcoming me once again. I was not here last year due to a family emergency. I think Joe covered this session last year, Joe or Michael.
You did a good job, Joe.
Yeah, good. Well, that's good. I'm training them. So for those of you who don't know me, I'm Will Koppinger, Vice President for the Merrimack Valley Chamber of Commerce, Chairman Vying Court, Manager Mailer, and esteemed members of the board, thank you for having me. Appreciate it. On behalf of the 200-plus businesses in the town of North Andover that are members of the Merrimack Valley Chamber, we certainly appreciate this opportunity to speak on their behalf. I think we can all agree that a key component to having a vibrant and healthy city or town is having a healthy and vibrant business community, keeping people employed and keeping businesses going strong. With this in mind, we would observe that property tax cost is an area where a tax reduction can and would assist businesses in remaining viable and healthy, and assist them in their continued development and growth. And very simply, to this end, again, in recognition of this, the chamber would respectfully request that the town of North Andover consider reducing the business and industry tax classification. And I know you're all very fair and reasonable. We'll consider this. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Any other, any other comments from public?
There was a letter that was sent to the favor of the board.
We have it.
Yeah, we have it.
Thank you.
Would you like to read that letter?
No, he pretty much summarized it.
He summarized it, okay.
Unless he would like to read it, but I think you're only got one foot out the door.
Thank you. Okay, any other, any other comments? I have a motion to close the public hearing, please. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we are out of the public hearing. Next on the agenda, we'll go to consent items. First on the agenda for consent item is a vote to set the property tax classification for FY seventeen. Do I have a motion at this point?
I think it was a much different conversation this year than it was last year, where we really had to dig deep into the numbers and look at condo owners and multifamily homeowners.
You're talking about last year?
Yes, last year. Unfortunately, our town manager, you provided us with that breakdown, which I was grateful for, because even with our vote last year to take in consideration those two very different types of property owners, I think about this past year and all the different things this board has done, and I still get stopped by multifamily homeowners in the supermarket and condo owners just about that increase, which wasn't necessarily because of this board. It was because the value of their property dramatically skyrocketed. And so last year, we made the move to that 1.36 shift. And Garrett, thank you for including the 1.35 as well, to see the balance between the two and how negligible almost the change is. And it truly is. I mean, I think in most cases, we're talking about either increasing or decreasing by $10 the expected tax bill. So I wanted to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to keep it at the current rate. to keep it at the current rate... Current shift, excuse me, of 1.36.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to keep it at 1.36 shift. Any further discussion on this?
No.
Okay. Okay, so at the proposed shift, obviously, it doesn't... We're not changing that shift, so we're keeping things pretty much status quo between the business and residential tax shift. Final opportunity for comments. Okay, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Did you want to say something?
I just want to point out, whatever shift you adopt, there's a factor that you would have to vote.
The actual factor.
Okay, so...
Yes, the voters would like to adopt the residential factor of 1.36 for the purpose of classifying the FY 2017 North Andover property tax rates. Is that what you mean, Garrett?
Yeah, the residential factor which produces a .949540.
Oh, the long, million-long number. That's right.
Okay, so let's hold on. Let's take this one step at a time. So Phil had already made the motion for the 1.36, and that was... Okay, and that was seconded. So you're going to make a friendly amendment to include that.
What's the actual factor, Garrett?
The factor.
The factor is .949540. Here's the one thing.
That's my amendment.
Okay, so the amendment is made as read by Mr. Bowles. Do I have a second on the amendment?
Point 9495.
Okay.
Yeah, it's right there.
So let's vote on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we'll take the original motion with the amendment. All those in favor of the 1.36 classification shift as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So we are at 1.36 again for this year.
Okay.
Okay, moving on. Thank you, Garrett, for all that information.
Thank you, guys. We had quite a few Finance Committee members.
Yes, thank you, Finance Committee. I know.
We had a court.
But thank you for coming.
Welcome back anytime.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so moving along. Next on the agenda is the winter parking ban. We're voting to set the parking ban starting this coming Sunday, I believe, at 11 o'clock or at... I'm sorry, December 11th. And then we have some streets that are exempt from the parking ban. And I don't know, any other information, Mr. Manager, you want to provide for this?
No, typically, we often do this around this week, but given that the meeting date, it's about a week later than it's typical. Then normally, you'll get near the end of this, and we'll have a conversation near the end of the expiration of the parking ban to determine if we will continue it a week after that.
So we'll set an end date, but we'll keep that kind of flexible as we... As the weather, as we determine the weather.
I think we'll typically- It's snowing in Hawaii. Anything's gonna happen.
I think we typically do that through the end of February, and then we bring it up at the first meeting of March and go, "We do it."
Okay. And you'd like to make an amendment?
The amendment is to 400 block of Stevens Street, Odd Side Parking.
Okay.
There's a problem there with parking, so...
Okay, so there are some streets that they're exempt from the parking ban even on Odd Side, depending on the parking situation. So you're going to add the 400 block of Stevens Street-
Yep.
-Odd Side Parking only.
Yep.
Okay.
I second that.
Okay. So we have an amendment to the original plan, which I don't know that we need to take a vote on. We just voted on the entire plan?
We voted on the entire plan, yeah.
Yeah.
As amended.
As amended, okay. So do I have a motion?
Well, don't we have to agree to actually amend it?
No, if you voted as amended, it's fine.
Okay. I do... It's probably worth mentioning in case people are panicking at home that Chief Gray has said that they will only put warning stickers on cars initially. They're not going to actually write the citation. So that way, for people watching at home, let's say, how will people know?
That's the first time that's been done. The actual writing.
I'll be honest, I've heard of warning stickers before.
First time I see it on radio.
The warning is a common practice.
I've always asked for it.
Otherwise, they're warnings.
And they are... I think they are really understanding.
Yep.
Lieutenant Bowles is nodding in agreement that warnings are issued at first.
Yeah, about a week or so, just so people be used, but we know they're aware of it.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So do we have a motion for the parking ban to go into effect?
Mr. Chairman, move to accept the parking ban as presented, as amended, excuse me, to the Board of Selectmen for the 2016-2017 winter season.
Second.
Okay, and the dates are?
Beginning...
December 11th.
Yes, but we don't want to put an actual end date. So beginning Sunday, December 11th.
We can put through the end of February, and then we'll bring it on the agenda near the end of February and look at the farmers' album and figure out what we're doing next.
Through February 28th, 2017.
No, this is at the end of February. We're talking about the end.
No, I know, but I'm just saying in general.
Oh, yeah.
All right, so let's... So we have right now, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Now, do we have a discussion?
No, I was just saying, however, if we do get a snowstorm in the next couple of days, we expect you to be off the road so they can plow. Like I said, I wasn't joking. It's really snowing in Hawaii. It was in the news tonight.
What?
It really is snowing. Yeah, in the mountains.
Hopefully, it's not coming this way.
Yeah.
Hopefully, it's not coming this way.
That's what I mean. So you just never know what's going to happen.
Right. Okay, but so right now, we've got December 11th through February 28th. And, you know, yes, we're a little bit late. So if we have an issue, we're going to have to deal with it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we've got the parking ban set. Next, we have a request from Rabbi Zalman Bornstein to use the town common from December 23rd, 2016, to January 2nd, 2017. I'm assuming that should be 2017, for a menorah display and to use the town common in December 26th, 2016, from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 for the lighting of the menorah.
Move that the Board of Select and approve the request of Rabbi Zalman Bornstein to use the town common for a menorah display from December 23rd through January 2nd and for the lighting of the menorah on December 26th from 6:00 to 7:00 as presented.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
All right.
Okay. See, I don't think Reverend Bornstein was here anyway. I didn't ask for him.
He's never been.
Okay, next we have two appointments. I'll turn it over to the Appointments Subcommittee. Would you like to speak on it?
So we have two individuals this evening. We have Joyce Fioka... If I'm not being able to pronounce these correctly, but Fioka Bold and Jeffrey S. French. Joyce has applied for the Council on Aging position. Jeffrey has applied to join the Commission on Disability Issues. That's one particular commission where we've had a lot of discussions, Rosemary and myself, the town manager and his staff, about adding members to it, so...
Coming along.
So I motion that we appoint Joyce to the Council on Aging and Jeff to the Commission on Disability Issues.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and thank you for your service to the town. We appreciate it, and we rely on it mostly. It's a town runs smoothly because of it.
Grind to a halt. Come on, Tracy. We are only... Your days are numbered. You have to be saying this every opportunity.
Oh, my goodness, it is. It is true. If not volunteers throughout the community, North Andover would grind to a halt.
All right. Thank you.
I was getting the dirty looks from you. I was hoping that you were going to jump in and help me.
All right, don't make me gavel you. All right. We're moving in. All right, so I'm going to hear a motion to return to licensing. We suspended licensing, we returned to licensing. So we got second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're back in licensing.
Before we begin this evening... Actually, is there anybody from Merrimack College here? No, so I don't have to take anything out of order then. So this evening, the licensing commissioners are reconvening to discuss a pair of violations, the first of which has been presented to the Board of Selectmen with the alleged violation of the alcohol beverages license issued to Hokkaido Restaurant, Inc. Let me make sure that this hearing... Before... So before the public hearing, the alleged violation occurred, and the alleged violator was sent a letter from this commission. It alleged... Or it was sent, excuse me, to Mr. Young Wan Ning, who is the manager of Hokkaido Restaurant, Inc., 1250 Osgood Street, North Andover, Mass., 01845. They were sent the letter regarding the possible violation, stating the North Andover Licensing Commissioners hereby notifies you and request you to be present at a public hearing to be held on Monday, December 5th, 2016, at 7:00 p.m. in the second-floor meeting room at the North Andover Town Hall, 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass., regarding an alleged violation of an alcoholic beverage licenses issued under Section 12 of Massachusetts General Laws, 138, to Hokkaido Restaurant, Inc., Young Wan Ning, manager. This violation relates to the alleged incident described in the attached incident report, which occurred at your establishment on November 4th, 2016, at approximately 12:20 a.m. As stated in the report, the violation is pursuant to 204 CMR 2.052, permitting an illegality on the licensed premises to wit Chapter 138, Section 34, sale or delivery of an alcoholic beverage to a person under 21 years of age. At this hearing, you will have the right to have counsel present, may have witnesses testify on your behalf, and you will be entitled to question witnesses as a result of the testimony to be given that night. The action of the commissioners could result in a warning, suspension, revocation, or modification of your license sincerely filled with College Arrow Chairman, Licensing Commission, CC to the North Andover Police Department. So I was... So prior to this meeting, I discussed with the town manager that this would be to read the letter first and then move to open up the public hearing. And so now, I would entertain a motion to open up the public hearing.
The question I have first, Mr. Chairman, is, are there two different violations? Are they going to be two separate?
There are. So I've chosen to take the two individual violations separately. So Hokkaido Restaurant is on the agenda for two violations that occurred on separate evenings. This one was already scheduled prior to the next... Prior to the other one. And so I thought it was best to take them separately.
So we're going to take them both separately and make our judgment at the end of both of them?
Um, I think that-
Or at the end of two?
Well, we have certain rules regarding a first... We have to determine whether or not there was a first... A second violation because this is their second alleged... They were in violation earlier this summer. This is the second alleged violation. And then, depending on how we find this... Again, it's an alleged violation until the hearing is held. We would then vote whether or not to find them in violation. And then we go through this process a second... A second time this evening with the same business. So I think, Ms. Watson, you made a motion to... I don't know, actually.
Yeah, the Board of Select, you know, for the public hearing for the purpose of obtaining information regarding a possible liquor license violation by Hokkaido Restaurant, Incorporated, 1250 Osgood Street.
Second.
All in favor of entering the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, hearing none. We're opening the public hearing this evening. I see in the audience, we have some individuals from the North Andover Police Department. Lieutenant Bowles, if you'd like to... Any witnesses on behalf of the town would like to approach the board, introduce yourselves, and inform us about the evening's events.
Thank you. I'm actually going to let Patrolman Michael Logan speak to this incident. He was the primary officer involved and the author of the report.
Okay.
Good evening. So on the day in question, Friday, November 4th, approximately 12:20 a.m., I conducted a liquor check at the Hokkaido, located at 1250 Osgood Street. Upon entering the parking lot, I observed several parties standing in front of the establishment. One party was drinking from a bottle of Corona Extra. As I exited my cruiser, I observed him enter the establishment. The other parties outside did not appear to be of legal drinking age. I entered and located him by the bar. Standing in a large group of patrons did not appear to be of legal drinking age. I requested to speak with him in the lobby. He appeared young. He immediately became nervous and, without questioning, said to me, "I'm going to be honest with you. I'm not 21. I got in here with a fake ID." He was identified as being underage. I asked for other units to come to my location. We had the full shift come down, as well as the road sergeant, Sergeant Domenico. And during this process, we checked the IDs of all patrons in the bar. Several patrons fled prior to the officer's arrival. And while we were on scene, we had several patrons flee out of side door. We determined that a total of, I believe, was 11 patrons inside the bar at the time the entire shift got there were underage. Some came in with fake IDs. Some weren't IDed at all. Some used valid mass IDs that belonged to other persons. And ultimately, all the patrons who were underage were charged with MGL Chapter 138, Section 34(c), minor possession of alcohol. Those that used false IDs were charged with either Chapter 138, Section 34(a) procuring using false representation or in one patron's case, Chapter 138, Section 34(b), false identification. And all... I believe all the patrons involved were Merrimack College students. When I initially entered, Sam Lee, one of the employees there, stated he had identified all patrons prior to entering, and no one had possessed false identification. It should be no, uh, to read my report directly, it should be noted that during past liquor checks at this establishment, regular patrons reported physical altercations, highly intoxicated patrons, and underage patrons on a regular basis. Sam Lee has denied knowledge of this after I've personally informed him numerous times that he needs to contact the North Andover Police Department when disturbances occur in the bar. He reports that he has no security present at this establishment. It was reported that other underage patrons were able to exit the premises prior to being identified, many of them Merrimack College students as well as members of the Islanders' Junior Hockey Team. The underage patrons that were identified stated that underage Merrimack students are present in this establishment on a nightly basis. It should be noted that aside from the two females that attempt to flee the establishment, all underage parties were highly cooperative and respectful when interacting with officers. And we see several fake IDs. Um, there were no arrests. All the parties were summoned.
Were the fake false IDs also, or were they out of state IDs?
Or were they, um, were they mass ID? They were all out of state?
They were all out of state. Um, Connecticut, Rhode Island, Maryland.
Were they driver's licenses or other types of ID?
They were driver's licenses.
All of them?
I believe they all were. Um, it's, they were all clearly, they, they showed, when you look at a fake ID, uh, an ID that appears to be false, lots of times the laminate will be poor and you can see that, but they all, I believe they were all driver's licenses or appeared to be.
And what, so you've just said, so what condition were the driver's licenses?
Worn. They typically worn. You'll see the laminate will be coming off.
So the laminate was loose?
Yeah.
So this is for the evening of November fourth, correct?
Yes.
And November fourth?
The morning of November fourth.
Morning of November fourth. One of the young ladies that ran away from you, she was one of the ones that did not have an ID at all, correct?
No, she was, she had no ID in her possession.
Okay. And the other one that did, the one that, according to the police report, gave you an especially tough time, had her sister's Massachusetts ID with her, correct?
Yes, that was a legal ID.
A legal ID.
She was just misusing it.
But ultimately, over the course of this evening, you encountered, according to your testimony, two individuals that didn't even have IDs?
Yes. Either, either myself or another officer that was on scene did.
Okay.
So they didn't even have fake IDs in their possession? They were just there without any kind of, anything that said that they were of.
No. They had no ID in their possession.
Including one that tried to physically run away from you and hide and?
Yes. Well, we had dealt with her several months earlier, so she was, not interested in dealing with us again.
I understand. Um, I have no more questions for Officer Logan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Officer Logan. And so, um, is there anyone in the audience this evening to speak, um, on behalf of Hokkaido? Um, so I'd, I'd ask that, it looks like that we have three people approaching, if each of you wouldn't mind identifying yourselves as well as your relationship to Hokkaido?
Yes, uh, I'm the owner, I'm Sam. Sam Lee. So, first, I want to say...
Is there, if everyone's going to be speaking on behalf of you, um, each of you just want to identify yourselves and then your relationship?
And, uh, my name is Wei Yu, and I'm a bar manager at the Hokkaido Restaurant.
My name is Jordan Ketchum, and I'm just a patron. I'm there fairly regularly, so...
Yes, I want to say, um...
I just could suggest we get names, spellings, and addresses of people who want to speak, so we can accurately put it in the record of the meeting.
Sam, do you mind spelling your name for the record?
Yes, uh, my name's Sam Lee. I'm the owner of the Hokkaido Restaurant.
Can we use your residential address, please? Your residential address as well?
Uh, sixty-three, Delaware Circle, on Lower.
Delaware Circle?
Yep, on Lower. Yep.
How do you spell Lee for the record?
L-E-I.
L-E-I.
Yep. So, um...
Okay, Sam, continue.
Right. Uh, on that night, I was, uh, you know, I checked everybody ID. The first I want to say is that we don't serving underage. But the problem is the kid, they use a fake ID and we, we was without a scanner. So...
What about the scanner?
The, now, now we just got the, uh, scanner, the ID scanner.
When, when is just? When did you get it?
When did you get the scanner?
Up, after that, the, uh, weeks ago.
First incident after the first incident or after the second incident?
After the second.
So after November twentieth?
Yeah. Because it...
So, only three, so my ask for distinction is because this is, Mr. Lee, this is your business's second time before us, and there are two incidences this evening. And so, can you give the approximate date just as opposed to before, after the incident, the approximate date of when you got the scanner?
I was asking the, uh, officer, give me the, some, uh, information to how, how can I get the ID scanner?
And you now have one?
And they give me the information. I was go there, but...
So you don't have a scanner?
Now I have it.
When did you get that?
A week's ago. One week's ago.
So after, so you're before us for two things this evening, so after the November twentieth incident is when you got the scanner?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Not the, and that's not what we're discussing at the moment, but just, just for clarification. Okay, you can continue.
Yep. So, um, I was check everybody ID. And I want to say a problem is, uh, it was too many, uh, kid, they come in at the same time. And some of the kid, I can say they was a use other people ID, they use a fake ID, but I don't know what, it was a fake. But I know some of the people, they use other people ID. I was always kick them out. And I can see some of the kid, they was a change of the other people clothing, and then use the other people, uh, other, other, other ID again and again.
So you observed this that evening?
Uh?
You observed this that evening?
Yeah. I was a kick, kick them out.
But there were, of course, people, that doesn't apply to any of the ones the officers found.
Yeah, some of the kid, I, I can see they coming to town, try to, you know, use the other people ID. I kicked them out. So...
I have a lot of questions. I'll defer to my colleagues to ask their questions first.
You know, I, I might have misunderstood, but was there somebody who was drinking outside the building?
You know, because sometime we walk around, you know, we walk, when we walk around, the kid maybe, we just cannot see the kid, they bring the drink out to out there.
So the answer is yes.
So, after that, I was absolutely a high, higher bouncer to, to, you know, watching them. Absolutely nobody can bring out the alcohol to outside.
And you've hired somebody? You've hired somebody?
Yeah.
When did you hire that person?
Yeah, I going to hi.
You haven't hired them yet?
Not yet. But I'm going to hiding. I still want to, you know, I, I have a few regular customer, they want, they have an interest thing to doing a bouncer. Because, uh, used to be, they was, um, doing a bouncer on the, on the restaurant too. So they have experience. So...
But to be clear for the record, you have not actually hired anybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
The, the machine that you bought, did you buy an actual machine or are you talking about an app on the phone?
Um, I have information about this. That's, that's the machine I actually, I get now.
And how do you use that now? That you've been, that you have it? What do you do with it? How do you use it?
Just scan the ID, if it was to show, uh, the, you know, the view age on, on, on the screen. Yeah.
In the state of Massachusetts, what, what, what is a legal ID? Well, let me tell you, in the state of Massachusetts, a legal ID has to be a Massachusetts or license or, um, a military ID and I believe a passport. Were most of these kids from out of state? Or their, their false ID or whatever ID they were using was from out of state?
Used to be did the kid, they use the driver license?
Yes.
And sometime is the passport. So, we look, look over if, you know...
Are you aware that the only really acceptable form of ID is, has to be Massachusetts passport or, um, a military ID? I believe those are the three and...
Uh, we used to be accept, uh, the driver license and the passport.
But driver license from only Massachusetts, if you take it from another state, that's not considered an acceptable form of ID?
But a passport would be.
A passport is. I don't know.
Standing alone would be.
Yes. I should have paused between this, the description.
Mr. Lee, are you tip certified?
Yes.
You are. But you don't know what a legal ID in the state of Massachusetts is?
Yeah, I know.
No, you don't, because you just, you couldn't answer the question. Just curious if you had your certification. Thank you.
Yep.
So, Mr. Lee, just to be clear about something, though. While I appreciate the discussion about scanning, I appreciate the discussion about legal IDs. It's all moot when you have multiple people caught by our local police department in your establishment without any IDs. That means you didn't check their IDs. That means no scanner would have detected it. I mean, it, the bare minimum wasn't done in this particular instance based on the police department's testimony. Do you refute that? Do you, do you agree with Officer Logan's, um, explanation that there were at least two individuals in your, your establishment without an actual ID at all?
I don't agree.
You disagree?
Yes.
Why?
No, maybe I can answer that question.
Um, if that's okay, in that instance, can you please re-approach, give your name and your residential address, please, and spell your name?
Uh, my name is Wei Yu, and I'm at forty-eight Plymouth Ave in Burn Tree.
Plymouth Ave, and can you spell your name for the record?
R-W-E-I, and the last name's Wei Yu.
And, Mr. Yu, if you then want?
So, uh, my estimate was, uh, you know, in the middle of the shift, my back door, you know, like when the, after the cop came, there was a couple girl that went right through the back door and tried to get away from the cop, obviously. So, but in middle of the shift, my back door was open once with no reason. So I turned, turned around and looked, and I asked what happened. And people, some kid just replied to me, say, "Oh, I just lean on it by mistake." So my figure is those people might came in from back door after we denied them the service, when they tried to use other people's ID, tried to enter to our, uh, to our bar at the first time.
So can I ask a question?
Yes.
The way every establishment has a different policy, is the expectation for your patrons that they get IDed upon entry and then stamped, which happens at some bars? Or is it the responsibility of the server?
We don't give them at the bar. We don't give them. Just ID checking at the door.
So, the ID gets checked at the door?
Yes.
But then people walk in and out, and you have no idea if they've already been IDed?
Uh, when they re-enter the bar, they, they will get checked again.
Okay. And so, but that means the server is not expected to identify, the server, the bartender is not expected to ID each patron?
No, we check randomly as a server.
No, random checks are not, I mean, you have to ID a patron. So how is that patron getting IDed? It's the door?
At the door and sometime in the, at the bar, at the counter as well when they purchase a drink.
But the counter is considered a secondary check?
Yes.
You realize how, how easy that is if you're not, I mean, because if somebody comes in, if somebody is under the age of twenty-one, are they not allowed to come in? Because you, of course, are also a restaurant, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, as a bar area, was under twenty-one, you cannot go.
Cannot walk in, and you're standing at that bar area?
Yes.
Okay.
But the back door is accessible?
Yes. But, you know, they just find a way to get in.
Well, the, but you just said because the back door is accessible?
Yes.
So if the back, I mean, so they didn't find?
No, they opened, they, someone opened from inside to let them in.
So...
Don't, so, I mean, that's, that being said, there was, there were two individuals then in the bar that accessed it through a completely legitimate way, apparently. I mean, it's one that's not monitored, and they didn't have IDs. So, with all due respect, then you agree, then there were two individuals, I mean, you, you kind of made an excuse for why there were individuals in there without IDs. You didn't refute the officer's claim. So you are corroborating that story. There were two individuals in there being served without IDs, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Two underage individuals.
The problem is when they come in, when they into the door, they use the other people ID sometimes, you know?
Well, again, you invented the system, not us. And if you don't notice that the same person with a different face is walking in with the same name, I mean, that's a problem. So, um, I will, um, I don't know if there are other questions or if the, the...
Uh-huh.
I have a question, what question for the rest of the board, uh, Rosemary? On the first violation, how long ago was that? Can you remember?
I was chairman.
That's you?
I mean, it was, I was chairman. This is, this is your second and third time before me.
And at that time, if my mind is not sketchy, didn't we suggest buying a machine at that time?
Their, their prior violation before us was regarding, they were serving at one forty-five PM, at one forty-five AM, which was long after they were supposed to close. It was not related to, to underage drinking.
Okay, all right. After hours. Yeah, all right.
I, I should say so, um, Sam and, and we, if that's, I don't, I don't know if the, the woman behind you also wants to offer up her testimony by offering her name and residential address?
Um, so it's Jordan Ketchum. It's K-E-T-C-H-A-M. It's two twenty-nine Jenny Lane in Elliott, E-L-I-O-T, Maine. So obviously, I drive to come and, and go to the Hokkaido, um, almost on a weekly basis. Um, we, I go there because a group of friends, we, we end up meeting there on Thursday nights. Um, I have no interest in drinking around underage people. Um, so these guys, what I've walked in there, I'll, I'll walk in anywhere between eight forty-five to ten thirty at night. And I've, there have been times when I've walked in and there are groups of people waiting, um, sitting on the benches outside of the bar. There is a partition, there's a door that you can get into the bar because they've been turned away. And what these college students do is they take Uber. Good for them, it's responsible. But they come in, literally come in droves, and, but these guys have turned them away, and they've been forced to wait for their Uber to come back. And I've seen it on multiple occasions. People that say that there's underage drinking on a nightly basis, I would have to tell you, like, I mean, I'm there fairly regularly. I, I don't think that that's a fair, that's...
Fairly regularly, you say, once a week. That's...
I'm there about once a week, but on a nightly basis, it's...
You're not there?
No, you're right, but...
And can I ask, in all fairness, Miss, if these underage individuals are getting past the servers, why would a typical patron observe that?
Mm-hmm. What, I would observe what?
These, these underage individuals are getting past the servers, the professionals who are tip certified. So what makes you more qualified than them to even observe that?
I'm just saying, I just think it's a, it's a little bit of, of, um, hyperbole, if you will, if other people...
You are aware of how many individuals are caught in this one evening, correct?
I, I heard him. I heard him. But there have been plenty of times I've been there where there's definitely not people under twenty-one.
Unfortunately, it only takes a time like this.
No, I agree. I, I understand that.
A couple days later.
A couple days later. So it was two incidences within two weeks that are, are at discussion right now. Well, one of them's...
And of course, only, only the November, I mean, they're, the, these are both alleged incidences at this point?
Mm-hmm. I've been there plenty of times where they run a smooth business and they follow all, all rules and regulations from, from what I can tell as a patron. So that's, that's basically my point. I just, these guys are not, um, they're not there just to let anybody and everybody in the doors at any time. So they, they do run a, they do run a business and they take it seriously.
I, I, I appreciate that. I've frequented Hokkaido myself and, um, for, for dinner and, and, and drinks in the bar. Um, but we are a college town.
Oh, I, yeah, I know. I went to a big college, I know, trust me. So, um, my, my point is, um, they, they do, overall, these guys do a great job managing their business, and I wouldn't drive all the way from UNH territory to go drinking with a bunch of college kids. If I want to do that, I'd be home.
So just to put this in perspective, as a patron, North Andover has quite a few license holders like Hokkaido. And, um, this is the first repeat offense that we've had within a five-month period. Actually, this is the first real repeat offense.
Ever?
Yeah, that I've ever really had. The only other one was, was a liquor store.
Ten years, liquor stores.
So, so just to put, put that in perspective, and of course, we have more on the agenda this evening. So just as somebody who, who chose to come and testify this evening and you put your credibility online, I'm not questioning that, I just hope you put that in perspective.
I, no, I understand that. And I've, you know, I've managed several different stores and, you know, I'm, I'm in business myself, but I just figured these guys, um, to be a little bit of a character witness for them. It's not all wrong all the time, so...
We appreciate, we appreciate that. Are there any more questions for this witness?
No.
Boy, did you get all the information that you need, right?
Thank you.
Uh, do you, any, any questions in general for?
I, um, this to the owner, when you came before this board, when you were applying for your license, do you remember us talking to you about what is the standard for, um, a legal form of ID? And do you remember us talking to you, it's not mandatory, but suggesting that you might want to buy a scanner? Because if you do run a license through the scanner and it passes, and later we find out that it was a very good fake ID, that the board would probably be a little bit more understanding. But what, why did you choose not to buy a scanner? And why did you choose not to observe what is considered a legal form of ID? It's okay. I get it.
But it also sounds like you, you may need, you're, it also sounds like you're understaffed, to tell you the truth, to handle the Merrimack College students that are coming in, hopefully the ones of legal drinking age or the, or the, you know, the, let me try to put it this way. You're, you're understaffed for what you should be, um, handling there. If you're just considering now hiring a bouncer or someone that can check the IDs, um, you can't rely on your bartender to both check the IDs and check the people at the door. I, I don't know how many staff you have up there, but it sounds like if people are sneaking in the back door, you've got an access point there that's not being watched very carefully. It seems like IDs are not being thoroughly checked. It seems like if people are going and changing out of clothes and, and, and trying to fool you, then, um, it, it, that just seems, um, like you have a, a wide open issue there that you need to close that gap. Because it's, people are, you, you, we can't hear that. We can't have that. We can't have people, you know, sneaking in and, and changing clothing and, and everything else. I know they do it, and I know they try to get away with it, but we got to be smarter than them and, and can't allow that to happen.
If I may, Mr., I just want to ask one more. Again, this is from the report that Officer Logan provided the incident report. He made it very clear that upon pulling my cruiser into the parking lot, I observed several parties standing in front of the establishment smoking. I observed one party to be drinking from a bottle of Corona Extra. Officer Logan, correct? That's, that means you observed somebody outside of the establishment with a Corona Extra in their hand?
Yes, that's correct. They were standing outside the front door in the parking lot.
Do you refute that claim? Is that correct?
Yeah, I believe it.
So there was somebody standing in front of your establishment? So with all, I mean, all of the great things that we can say this evening about checking IDs, getting the scanner that works, um, making sure that, you know, there's a more responsible, you know, parties in place, this entire report, which you're not refuting screams irresponsibility. I mean, you said that you checked people before they entered through the partition, and yet somebody walked past you with a Corona in their hand, where you just said you actually had somebody...
Sometimes they can sneak a drink behind their clothes, or they can bring the drink on their own. That's even, that's even belong to our establishment at all.
With all due respect, once there are no...
We have no clue that, that bottle of Corona was, like, whether they bought it on their own. I mean, people can sniff that to my, into my bar all the time.
And I absolutely appreciate that. And of course, you guys don't serve nips. And so that would be an easy thing. However, again, you serve, you serve Corona Extra.
Yes.
I don't know many people that, it doesn't actually matter. I can't imagine them walking around with twelve packs under their coat to go into a bar.
Not a twelve pack. They can easily hire a bottle inside their coat.
But so, I mean, to then go and drink, I, that being said, I have to ask this question because it doesn't matter. They wouldn't be in the bar area if they were underage. You had people drinking in front of your main door. Somebody got by you when you check your IDs with, with a alcoholic beverage that they could have easily given to students or anybody who was under the age of twenty-one. And all this talk about scanners, while I appreciate, and I, I, I mean, we've, we've actually just sent a letter to every license holder reminding them to be vigilant. Two of the incidents, including one who ran away and made up, one of our officers chased them on your property, didn't have any form of identification. And I know you said that they snuck in, but if they snuck in, then why were they standing outside and running away to begin with? I mean, it just, none of this, there's a lot more to this, and I think we're getting distracted. And I think you, gentlemen, excuse me, are getting distracted by this. I mean, this is not something to take lightly, and there's really not, in my opinion, excusing it. So, um, that being said, those are my comments. I guess I should...
You know, say one last thing. Yes, the, the kids who are legal adults but not legal drinkers are quite smart, and they can be pretty sneaky and...
You're absolutely right.
But unfortunately, the burden is not on them. I mean, that's a whole other issue. The burden's on you. And...
Even with a fake ID, and I understand they're very, the fake IDs are very good, but it's still fake, and it still means they're underage.
But theirs weren't very good. They were peeling, they were falling apart.
They didn't exist. They didn't...
Well, in some cases, they didn't exist. In others, they did. But, but they still, they're still not legal drinking age regardless of whether they have a fake ID. And, you know, the scanner's going to help, but you have to use it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Vigilantly. And you have to put in, somehow you have to have other controls in place to lock down that, that back door, to ensure that you've got adequate coverage for people to check IDs and to make sure people aren't walking out.
Or have an alarm go off when the door goes open.
Yeah, or, and have some, some way of monitoring what's going on in front of your building because you've got folks out there drinking. Um, it's, it's, yeah, it's just not a good situation at this point.
Do you have any security videos?
Yes, we do.
You do?
And you didn't review the security videos?
Excuse me?
Did you review the security videos?
On what, like, we, we have an incident, like, people's car got hit in the parking lot and then they asked us to review.
I mean, this is a major event, you had quite a number of people, you had police on your premise. You've, you've speculated that the two individuals without I Ds perhaps snuck through the back door. You remember it, in fact, quite vividly. You didn't go back and look at those videos?
Uh, no, we don't have a camera at the back door at that angle.
So that answers.
Right.
Okay. Unless there are more questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, my move to that the board of selectmen closed the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor. Aye. All opposed, hearing none. The public hearing is closed.
I just have a couple of things to say. Since nineteen ninety-one, I can't remember being this bad for any establishment in town, ever. And we, you know, it's, and this is, this is good police work too. Before we had a, had a sting on operations and caught a lot of people, this was just an ordinary officer passing by, seeing something wrong and responding. And I think that's, that's very good work and congratulations.
Likewise, I agree with, I can second what Selectman Stewart says. I mean, this has gotten to the point where in fact, I mean, the board knows and for the people at home, again, the town manager's office and I, we sat down, we drafted a letter that was reminiscent of one I sent out over a decade ago, reminding license holders about the increased use of fake I Ds. I mean, obviously quite a few Merrimack students have them, this according to this police report.
But like Rosemary said, didn't we suggest that when the first came in, that they get this machine then? That's what I was trying to get first time.
Can you just recommend that there will close the public hearing?
Yeah, if you want to make a motion, second and then have a discussion on the motion, that would be appropriate, but I just want to be concerned that would, that this appear to be added to the conversation after you've closed the public hearing.
Move that the board of selectmen, acting as licensing commissioners, find that on November fourth, right? Yeah, on November fourth, twenty sixteen, at Hokkaido Restaurant, Inc., twelve fifty Osgood Street, a liquor license violation did occur pursuant to Town of North Andover Alcoholic Beverages Regulations in two oh four C M R two point oh five two permitting an illegality on the licensed premises to wit, chapter one thirty-eight, section thirty-four, sale or delivery of an alcoholic beverage to a person under twenty-one years of age.
I'll second that. Motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. The board is agreement, is in agreement that a violation did occur. So...
Well, is this, we, is this actually considered as a second offense technically correct?
It's a second liquor license violation, yeah.
Second liquor license violation. Well, I, you know what, I mean, I do that cork stuff. Sorry. It's very, um...
So, I mean, do we want to take these, you said you want to take them individually, do you want to go through this motion combined or do you want to...
No, you can't.
No, I think we, you probably need to do a ruling on this one, then go back to the other one.
We have to open up the next hearing.
Well...
I'm not sure it's required, you just choose the way you want to go.
Right.
I suggested you could open the hearing, close the hearing and make a vote as it relates to the violation or not in the next hearing, but there isn't a reason why you couldn't discuss the, what happens next in terms of penalty after...
After the hearing.
You could go sequentially, following the policy in terms of how it's literally written, but there isn't a reason, as long as you're tying it to the results of whatever you find from the hearings.
I mean, so we can outright discuss what we think we're going to give them as a violation now? Because I'll tell you what I think.
What I'm, what I'm...
No, we were saying, I think what we're saying is...
Very good.
We hear the other, hear the other, the facts of the other findings and then, and then maybe issue one, one finding at the very end.
That's probably wise. Chairman, you think, College Arrow?
So, point of information, maybe some guidance from the town manager. So, third and subsequent offenses, fifteen to thirty days, second offense, five to fifteen days. Even as we debate them overall, should we make them in two separate...
That's what I was saying.
Even, even after we, after we resolve the second, the second...
Right.
This isn't a bylaws, it's a policy.
It's a policy.
So, I guess I'll make a suggestion or a motion, I don't know if it would be necessary, that we defer our decision till we hear the next hearing and then...
Defer the discussion on the sanctions.
Yes.
Before the next, after the next hearing.
I will say, on this one though, I will say there were eleven, eleven kids involved. Or, not kids.
So, motion made to defer the discussion though by Selectman Smidely on sanctions until after the next public hearing. Do I hear a second? Motion, correct, Selectman Smidely?
Yeah, that's fine. I think it just makes sense, because it's hard to put it all together.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we will defer that, I don't know if that actually really needed to happen, but whatever.
I don't either, we're in kind of new territory here.
So that being the case...
Remember having back to back with this.
So, let me pull up that information.
So do you want a motion to move into the next public hearing?
So, in the conversation ahead of time, because I wanted to make sure that we didn't, we didn't muddy these waters, the, we had talked about the letter being read before going to the public hearing, but...
Do you have a choice? You read, you read the letter before the public hearing last time, shall we stay consistent?
So, prior to any motion to go into the public hearing, I will read the next letter that was dated November twenty-first, twenty sixteen, to Young Wan Ning, manager, Hokkaido Restaurant, Inc., one two five zero Osgood Street, North Andover, Mass, zero one eight four five, regarding a possible violation. Dear Mr. Ning, the North Andover Licensing Commissioners hereby notify you and request you to be present at a public hearing to be held on Monday, December fifth, twenty sixteen, at seven P M. in the second floor meeting room at the North Andover Town Hall, one twenty Main Street, North Andover, Mass, regarding an alleged violation of an alcoholic beverage as license issued under section twelve of Massachusetts General Laws, chapter one thirty-eight, to Hokkaido Restaurant, Inc., Young Wan Ning, manager. This violation relates to the alleged incident described in the attached incident report, which occurred at your establishment November twentieth, twenty sixteen, at approximately twelve sixteen A M. As stated in the report, the violation is pursuant to two zero four C M R two point oh five two permitting an illegality on the licensed premises to wit, chapter one thirty-eight, section thirty-four, sale or delivery of an alcoholic beverage to a person under twenty-one years of age. At this hearing, you have the right to have counsel present, may have witnesses testify in your behalf, and you will be entitled to question witnesses. As a result of the testimony to be given that night, the action of the commissioners could result in warning, suspension, revocation or modification of your license. Sincerely, Phil D. College Arrow, Chairman, Licensing Commission, C E C, North Andover Police Department. With that being said, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
Like a motion that we enter into a public hearing?
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, hearing none, we are in public hearing. We'll follow the same process as before. Lieutenant Folds and Officer Logan are here. Appears Officer Logan was also involved in this incident.
Good evening, on the morning of Sunday, November twentieth...
For, for purpose of the record, state...
Officer Michael Logan, North Andover Police Department. On the morning of Sunday, November twentieth, at approximately twelve twenty A M., I conducted a liquor check at the Hokkaido located at twelve fifty Osgood Street. While inside the bar area, I observed a group of males drinking scorpion balls. These males drew my attention as they appeared to be very young in age and were frequently glancing in my direction and appeared very nervous. I approached them and requested their identification. I determined them to be, to be part of a larger group, all appearing young in age. Out of this group, two males were not of legal drinking age and had used false identification to enter the establishment. Both males were escorted to the lobby where the manager, Sam Lee, reported that he had checked all I Ds before allowing patrons to enter the establishment. I confiscated the false identification from the males and observed it to be clearly altered false, showing it to be poorly laminated. Both males were highly cooperative, stating, cooperative, stating it was their first time at the Hokkaido, but that it is known as a spot that Merrimack College students can easily access regardless of their age. Both parties did identify themselves as Merrimack College students. They were summoned for procuring alcoholic beverages by false representation and minors in possession of alcohol.
May I ask questions to Chairman?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Did you find that, that they seemed to be inebriated? I mean, I mean, scorpion balls?
They, they were sharing it, almost a group of three of them. They didn't appear highly intoxicated.
When you encounter a situation like that, is it then customary that, you know, you just do a general I D check or just, just point of information for how a process like that happens, but you have a full establishment and you encounter at least some people that are not of age?
On that night, the bar wasn't completely full and I believe this was only the first or second time I had been there since this previous incident. And these kids appeared very, very young, so that drew my attention. So, I just went up and asked if they had I D.
May I ask how old they actually were as well?
Who's in it?
One was twenty years old, the other one is nineteen.
So when you say, when you, when you describe the poorly laminated I D, I'm sorry if I, so I know one was a Maryland I D, correct, the one with the line?
Yes.
The poorly laminated one was from where?
Connecticut, I believe. The Maryland one, that black line is actually consistent with a Maryland I D. I made an error. I've did some research since then and that's consistent with valid Maryland I Ds. They both exhibited poor lamination, which was an indicator.
Really? And was that, were they actually fake I Ds or were they somebody else's I Ds?
They were both, they were both false identification. They, they didn't belong to anyone, they were fake.
Because they actually had their names on it, their real names on it, but...
Okay, oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Which is something else they do, right? They put their real names on it so they have their backup I Ds, their Merrimack College I D.
Yes, between this incident and the last incident, they're all Massachusetts residents, they can just go online and order I Ds that will have their information, but with a different address and state.
Any other questions for Officer Logan?
But both of these still probably would have showed up on a scan as being false. I would, I would expect on a decent scanner, they would be showing...
Is that something that...
I don't have enough experience with a scanner to speak to that. We run the licenses through our dispatch and they tell us that they don't exist. That's our policy.
But just to be clear, and I'm not familiar with the law, so the law is that a Massachusetts I D or a, or a passport, a federal passport are the standards for identification in an establishment?
Military.
I'm sorry, in a military. That's the standard?
To my watch, yes.
Yep, okay.
To, so the way it's, the way we've described it to licensing owners, and in fact, I actually pulled up the version sent by a predecessor as chairman several years ago, but to have a defense to charge of delivery or selling alcoholic beverages to an underage person, a licensee must reasonably rely on one of the four types of identification. Master driver's license, R M V identification card, passport and a valid military I D. So, I think that's an important line to have a defense on the charge of delivering or selling.
Why didn't they, why didn't they buy a machine after the first violation?
I suppose it's, if, if there are any more questions though for, for Officer Logan, we can have the other individuals come up and enter their name into the record and...
Just what, when you talk to the, the, these kids who are, you know, under the legal drinking age, do you ask them, well, you know, would you just walk in? Did they, did they tell you how easy it was or just, it just doesn't get into that level of discussion?
Um, it's not reflected in the report. In this incident, November twentieth, both gentlemen claimed it was their first...
First time.
Time coming into that establishment, they, but they did say that it is known by Merrimack College students as a spot where they frequent regardless of their age.
It's kind of funny because you said that their fake I Ds were worn, you know, that, so I really wonder how much it was their first time.
Well-used.
Good point. Any additional questions for Officer Logan?
Thanks again, Officer Logan.
Thank you. Would like to, the chief witness approach on behalf of Hokkaido, state your name and address again for the record.
Yeah, that was, you know, we, we just...
State, state your name and address for, for the record.
My name is Sam Lee, so the owner of the Hokkaido Restaurant of the one two five zero Osgood Street, North Andover. So on that night, we was a double check and double check that, that two, two young kid already. And I was request the, the credit card and check everything was a, you know, the quality just so good of the license, so we don't know it's a, was a fake, so...
But the law says it's...
But I promise, now I, we got the I D scanner, so absolutely we will catch everyone.
But you shouldn't even be accepting out of state licenses as a form of I D. I mean, that's the law and as, as Selectman Watson had pointed out, if you had taken the certification class that is covered in there, that out of state license is not a valid I D. And especially us being a college town, that's, it's, it seems all too common at this point. So, I mean, that is not a valid form of I D. Even if they have a credit card to back it up and a Merrimack College I D, it doesn't matter. They have to have a U S passport to, to, or as we said, a military I D or a Massachusetts state driver's license.
Yeah. I do have a comment and suggestion about it, did any department can, you know, do something to the, you know, to the college or high school to let the kid know they use a fake I D, it was a big trouble? And, you know, to teach them, you know, don't do it, don't use a fake I D, you know, some, some kind of thing, no.
Well, to be honest, the other establishments in town confiscate them and then they hold the person until the police arrive. So they don't just kick them out of their business and say, you know, you can't come in with a fake I D. They take the fake I D from them and they call the police. So that's kind of the standard that we're looking for.
Okay.
Not just kick them out and let them sneak in the back door.
All right.
And, and I mean, I think that you're, you're right, we have to work, and we've talked about working more closely with the college. That being said, there is a burden placed on the business owner to make sure that the I D isn't fake. I mean, if we were sitting here talking about Massachusetts I Ds, it'd be different, but we're talking about four copies of out of state I Ds. Less than three weeks after, you already had an incident where everybody had fake I Ds. Well, not everybody, some didn't have any I Ds.
Yeah.
Can I, what, what steps did you take after the first incident we discussed tonight? And this incident, which happened on November twentieth? I mean, of course, we didn't have you before our board after the, I mean, you're, you're here having a discussion about these two incidences, but there's a three-week gap between them. So, of course, when something happened at the beginning of November, how did your business respond? What were plans that you put in place to make sure it didn't happen again?
Now, I, you know, trying to hire, hire a bouncer.
I, what did you put in place in the three-week gap? Because of course, you had an offense at the beginning of November. I mean, that would put, put a really big push for me if I were you to want to make some changes to make sure I never again had about a dozen people in my establishment. And so that's what I'm at. What did you do in that? I mean, three weeks is a substantial enough time to make changes. I mean, of course, you were still accepting patrons in their, their business, so what did you do in those three weeks before this third incident? Or did you do nothing to change how?
I tried to go to the, the office, give me information, is some of the liquor store to ask them how to get the I D scanner. I, I was go there, but the store employee tell me I'm not the owner, I cannot give you any of the information. So, and we, we got to take more time and I don't know which one was qualified. Some of the scanner was a couple hundred dollar, some of the scanner going to a few thousand dollar.
So you did nothing, to be clear? So you did nothing, to be clear.
So, because I don't know which one suppose I get.
Did you think of checking with the police department or even calling our board here to see what we would recommend?
So end up, end up, we, you know, go to AB, uh, ABBCC website, check everything. To choice, uh, one of that, this one we, we buy is a thousand two hundred dollar, so...
The one that you've just, you've just bought one, you said?
Yeah, last week, yeah.
Okay, so you did, you did not procure a, a, a machine, though, between the first incident and the second incident this evening, that we're discussing this evening?
Because we, we need, we need time to, you know, decide which one we get, we should get.
So what else did you do then in the interim, until that machine arrived, to make sure you didn't have a repeat of November fourth? Because you said you were waiting for the machine, so of course, you still have this issue where, you know, a fair number of students and people under the age of twenty-one are coming to your business. So what did you do, at least, it would be, I guess, described as a Band-Aid until the, the machine arrived?
Main, after that, mainly we, we just serving the MS ID. If other states ID, we don't serving, so...
But that directly contradicts what the, do you dispute that Officer Logan found two individuals without out-of-state IDs in your establishment?
Yeah, after, after, yeah, after the office tell me that, the, after that, we only serving MS ID.
So after the twentieth?
So after, so again, that was not something you instituted prior to the twentieth?
Because the first time I ask at the, the officer, they, they don't give me really that much information about, so...
Well, it, it's the law. It's not their job to educate you.
Yeah.
It's their job to uphold the law. They, they, well, I'm sure they'll tell you if you ask them, but it's your, up to you to know the law and to know what's, what's a valid form of ID and what isn't.
Yeah.
So that's, that's your burden, not theirs. And I know they'll tell you if you ask them, but they just told me. So, um, you know, they'll, but it's not their job to, um, you know, that's your job.
Are there any other questions for this witness? Are there any other witnesses to speak to that evening? Any other questions for Officer Logan or any other parties?
I just have one more question. I think the last time you said you were the bar manager, but this time I believe you said you were the owner? Are you both owners?
I'm the bar manager.
You're the bar, I got you confused, I'm sorry. So you're the bar manager and you're the owner. Are there any other owners or is it just you?
Another three.
Another what, please?
I, I still have another three owner.
Which, which is Mr. Ning? Which one of you is, you're, you're not Mr. Sam, you're not Mr. Ning. Mr. Ning is not here this evening? Okay.
Who's Mr. Ning?
Who is the, what is the name of the other owner?
One of the C Hong Li, one of the Chin Jing Kwan, and another one is Chi Gao Li.
Could you make sure that gets into the record, please?
Could you please spell those names for...
Wow.
For, could you spell those names for the record?
No.
You don't know how to spell them?
One of the guys, Z I H O N G L E I.
That's a reasonable question.
So who is Young Won Ni?
That was the, uh, when we open, the first manager.
He is no longer there?
So you've changed managers since then?
But you haven't come in to change your managers with us on your license.
That, that's a, that's a violation, that's another violation. You, you need to change, if you change a manager who's responsible for your liquor service, that needs to come for us. That needs to, that needs to be changed with both ABBCC and us. I mean, that's a, that's a administrative issue that you have to clear up.
Could you please, could you please make, spell all the owners and all the active managers, please, for the record?
I believe this part of it, two bits. One is...
It's possible the change of manager happened as part of the license renewal. So we don't know, if it happened part of the license renewal, it wouldn't, it would have been incorporated as part of that process. So I'm not sure that's the case, but we can check that. In other words, if the bar manager changes past, as part of last year's renewal, it wouldn't have been separate. It would have been incorporated into the renewal.
But wouldn't the letter have gone to the, wouldn't the letter have been addressed?
It may have, but I want to make sure that it wasn't an administrative side. Second, at the time they originally applied for the liquor license, we, we have from that original application, I believe we have the names of the owners from that original application. That was the ABBCC application. I remember there were multiple owners at the time, because I remember Mr. Lee coming to us. So if we don't have that, we'll make sure through the reapplication process, we have the names of all the owners.
Are there, any further questions or can we...
You've never, yeah.
And can we entertain a motion to...
Okay, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
For a second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Move that the Board of Selectmen acting as Licensing Commissioners find that on November twentieth, twenty sixteen, Hokkaido Restaurant, twenty fifteen Osgood Street, a liquor license violation did occur pursuant to the Town of North Andover Alcoholic Beverages Regulations in two oh four CMR two point oh five two, permitting an illegality on the licensed premises to which Chapter one thirty-eight, Section thirty-four, sale or delivery of an alcoholic beverage to a person under twenty-one years of age.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, heard none? Alleged violation is now passed and confirmed.
I'll move right along with a, if there's no discussion, I'm happy to make a motion.
The appropriate, would the, for, the appropriate step would be to make, make a motion and then that, through that vehicle, have the discussion, or...
It's usually a motion to second and discuss.
Okay, so we, I, just for the record, we have the first violation on record, so now, because I just don't want if we combine them, now that's considered just one, so we're...
No, it's third. Second and third, yeah.
Okay, yeah, okay.
It's three in what, sixty days?
I think we're all saying the same thing, but you can have a, you can make a motion that says so many days for the second violation, so many more days for the third.
I just don't want it to be confused, God forbid, that there's another violation that now we're...
We're on the record as two different violations, and you can choose to, to parse off the days or combine them, but it's on the record as two separate violations for the two different ones.
Move that the Board of Selectmen acting as Licensing Commissioners impose a penalty of five days, um, five-day suspension for the second violation, ten-day suspension, for a total of fifteen-day suspension on Hokkaido Restaurant, twelve fifty Osgood Street, for violation of Town of North Andover Alcoholic Beverages Regulations in two oh four CMR two point oh five two, permitting an illegality on the licensed premises to which Chapter one thirty-eight, Section thirty-four, sale or delivery of an alcoholic beverage to a person under twenty-one years of age.
Motion made and seconded, do I hear a discussion on this?
Do we want to set the days?
We can pick days if you'd like, or fifteen consecutive. I don't have any issue with that, but it's been a...
I would motion for six, fifteen consecutive.
Fifteen, um, so we have to...
A date, a date beginning will give us, so you need to identify the beginning date of this suspension.
So you can pass this, so we need to vote on this first, so let's go to the...
I, um, so discussion on this, I mean, I, I'd like to just register my, my annoyance, because I know that with fake IDs, it is a different story, because it requires a different level of diligence. The first issue, at the first hearing this evening, we learned that they, there was no responsibility shown on behalf of the, on behalf of the business owner, where you had multiple people in the establishment with no ID, which means they were never asked. You had somebody outside of the establishment with a drink. I mean, you had approximately a dozen people in the establishment who are, they're twenty-one. Just thinking about the, 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 the past practices of, of this commission, I mean, I feel like especially given the proximity of these two incidences, and then the, the fact that the first one really was just general irresponsibility, I mean, ignore it.
The first offense was as well, I mean, I'm taking them as three in whole. First one was serving well after, after allowed time, the second. I mean, for, for, for me, because we are a college community, I, I don't like to hurt businesses in, in, by any stretch of the imagination, um, by any stretch of the imagination. But three, three violations, in my opinion, to this degree, in such a short period of time, clearly shows that, at the moment, you're irresponsible business owners, and that's dangerous to the people who live in this community or work in this community. It's just dangerous. It's been a disappointing couple of months with, with, with liquor in town. And, and, and we're, we are a college community, and I understand the fake IDs, but fake IDs have been around since I had a fake ID, and I'm almost fifty. And there was fake IDs long before that.
Don't put that, you write that down.
You know? And fake IDs have been around since drinking ages were, were, were put in place. Hokkaido, it's just unfortunate. And, 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 and I mean, on a third violation, we could go to thirty days.
There were thirteen kids too.
Repeat that, what do you, on a third, so you're just making, this is the motion only for the first?
No, I mean, well, I mean, five days and ten days for...
Yeah, so if they were here for a fourth violation.
And I'm saying, in truth, on a third violation, we have the...
A fourth violation?
No, on a third, I could have made a motion to thirty days.
The policy says a third violation is fifteen to thirty days standing on its own.
But this is, we are...
I'm not doing that.
So you're talking, oh, so this is considered the first and second because of the...
No, no.
No, it's considered the second and third. For the second violation, Selectman Watson recommended five days. For the, for the third violation, she recommended ten days for a total of fifteen days.
For the second and third violation.
But the policy states, the policy states fifteen, five to fifteen days on the second offense alone.
Yes.
And fifteen to thirty on the third offense alone.
Total, it could be forty-five days.
Oh, I thought you meant if they came back before, with a third violation.
Oh, no, if they come back before, again, I'll be, a very different way.
It could have been forty-five days.
Yes, exactly, that's why.
Could have been forty-five days.
Where does this take us to, Spars, uh, time?
Well, we need to make a motion on days.
Well, it depends when you begin, and then it's just fifteen days from there. So you have a motion made and seconded, have you, have they passed it? They haven't yet taken a, you haven't yet taken a motion, vote on the motion in front of you, which is the number of days of suspension. When you complete that vote, if it's passed in the affirmative, then you should begin a discussion about the beginning day. We understand it's going to be consecutive. Take a vote on that, and then we'll, we'll be able to move that forward.
Well, I, just a few, few comments. I, I, I think under the conditions, the penalty is on the lean side, but, but...
No question.
Coming up is the renewal of licenses for next year, and I think we have little tolerance on keeping that license if this is another violation. I'd be very concerned.
But we've closed restaurants before and taken licenses, it's, it's...
So they, they're gonna be warned, this, this, this is it, guys. Get the machine and stay in line.
I mean, my, my concern again, this is not, this is, I, I'm, I'm not taking the, I, I'm taking Don's, Don's, the statement that it's pretty lenient when you consider that, especially, I mean, the first and second violations over the course of the past several months have been entirely within their control. And has been entirely, not, not because of other individuals, it's been, because of choices, poor choices.
Yes, it would really be appropriate if you listened to what we were saying. I'm sorry, but you're talking while we are...
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I would advise you to listen to the deliberation.
So my, I'm, I'm inclined to vote no, only because I feel like that's, I do feel like that's lenient. Because again, for them, I mean, I just think of the only other time in my, in my short time on the board, we removed a license for ten days, and we selected ten really... The feedback was very harsh days for a business who let one person in to buy alcohol during a, an organized operation from North Andover Police. Again, this, this wasn't just, people were in there with fake IDs. And then the fact that, you know, the next, the next incident, excuse me?
No, you do have a point.
And the next incident occurred three weeks later, and we're told now, they're, now, after the third incident, and after the second formal incident in the span of three weeks, that now they're not going to accept out-of-date. I just feel like that's, I have no problem being strict with them, because every other business in our community is dealing, I mean, every other business like Hokkaido is dealing with the same issues technically, I would assume, and not falling victim to this. I mean, if you really read that police report from the second incident, the one that occurred on November fourth, I mean, you had police officers chasing people out of there, hiding behind fences, and they didn't even have IDs. And that, to me, screams, you know, there's an issue, that there was somebody standing out front of the establishment with a Corona, to the point that at night, it attracted the attention of one of our police officers. I mean, how does it attract a police officer driving by, and it doesn't attract the attention of somebody who's supposedly standing in the vestibule, collecting IDs? So I, I, I just want to explain why I will be voting no on that. So, that being said, a motion has been made and, and seconded, the discussion, I assume, any more discussion on this?
Well, again, it could intensify by the days that we choose that might satisfy you that you feel... No, just, well, I understand what Chairman de College Arrow was saying. It is very serious, but in your attempt to make it more stringent, you might want to consider certain days, but that's totally up to you.
My, my preference is not to divvy up days. I, just after reflecting after the last incident, which was my first time, I, I didn't, the feedback I got from business owners was, wow. One business owner actually said I would have preferred a thirty-day full vi, you know, thirty, you know, days in a row as opposed to the ten days that we cherry picked, which I don't... Indeed, it was, but...
I would suggest from December twenty-second, fifteen days they're out.
So, so you haven't taken a motion?
So, so we have to, oh, interesting, okay.
There's a reason for that.
I would only be in favor of, of, of a sequence, and so that would be what my... Well, we're having, we're having a discussion right now, though, about the, about why I'm going to be voting a certain way. So, I mean, that's, I want to be able to explain how, what my vote is based on.
That would be my suggestion, starting on December twenty-second ago, fifteen days, figure it out.
So I'm, I'm, if, uh, that being said, so the motion on the table is for fifteen full days, for five...
No, talk about it, I'm in discussions, still haven't made a motion.
No, I'm sorry, yes, my...
So a, a motion was made and seconded for five days allocated for the first, for the...
Second.
The second offense, ten days for the third offense. For a total of fifteen days to be determined, subsequent motion. So, um, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All against, non-motion passes, so now I'd entertain a motion to select those days that would be applied.
December twenty-second, so...
And then continuing off to...
So what's the final thing?
Continuing off, fifteen days from there.
From December twenty-second to January sixth.
Selectman Watson has made a motion.
Well, that's complicated because of the, the reapplying the licenses. Is there a reason that...
No.
Okay.
Uh, motion made by Selectman Watson, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. So the dates will go from December twenty-second until January sixth. I hope that we don't see you back at this meeting. So, um, there is, for other items on the agenda for this evening, all things that we're a little bit more familiar with.
So you'll be, oh, wait a minute.
Can I just say one thing?
Yeah, we should, we close it out here.
Yeah, you will make them understand how this works, that's what I was going to say, thank you.
Yeah, you meant... No, I mean, they're closed.
They're done.
Move that the Board of Selectmen acting as Licensing Commissioners, I mean, yeah, approve the four one-day wine and malt licenses for Merrimack College for events on December nine, ten, eleven, and fourteen, twenty sixteen, as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve licenses for Merrimack College on those dates, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, heard none?
Move to close the meeting of the North Andover License Commission.
Do I hear a second? All in favor? Aye.
Okay, we're back. We're back to old business. We have on the agenda two poll petitions from National Grid that we've continued from our previous meeting. So we will, I'll hear a motion, hold on, let me just check this out.
Just continuing the public hearing?
Yep, right, so we're continuing then, a public hearing that was, was continued from last meeting. So we have two of them, one of them on Middlesex Street and one of them on Johnson Street. So could you give us your name and address and, and your, wait, and your, well, who are you representing? Sorry, just naming, who are you representing? I'm stuck on this other one here, so... Who the heck are you?
David Boucher, senior designer at National Grid, eleven oh one Trenpley Street, North Andover. I'm here behalf of National Grid on these two poll petitions. I know we were here a few weeks ago, two, three weeks ago, and the board had some concerns. The first one, Middlesex Street, there was an issue with getting an easement on the private property of a guy wire. The designers have, of this particular petition, placed a, a new poll, have sent something. I'm not sure if all of you have gotten it, but there should be an update on the sketch. And if you have it, it'll show that, um, we're gonna, what we're asking for now is the guy wire to be in the public way on the sidewalk. The Lieutenant Lannan reviewed it with the designer, and on suggestion of, of possibly doing it this way, we've redone the, they redid the, the sketch. So, and the pole is going to be located closer to the street, right up against the curbstone, as opposed to getting it a little bit further off the street. And if the town sees fit, it would enable us to go forward to do it in this manner, as opposed to the previously, that we had petition for it.
So it, it won't be on the actual sidewalk, right? It won't be in the, in the sidewalk? So let's say someone's walking down with a carriage, pushing a carriage, they don't have to go around this guy wire?
No, as the, as the drawing depicts, we've got a, what we call a sidewalk fixture there, where the guy wire comes straight down, as opposed to at, at an angle. Do you have that?
Yes, thank you, I requested pictures, and you delivered pictures this time, appreciate that.
I'm looking at the diagram, I guess, I'm looking at the picture, now I see the picture.
There's a, there's like three pages of it now, that was...
Yeah, now I see it.
Yeah.
So the pole is already there in the sidewalk, and then the guy wire will come down about six or seven feet away from the pole.
It's at least, yeah, make it at least five. I mean, I know, hand... I mean, I know, handicap, is it four or five feet you need?
I think it's four feet.
Four feet. So we're going to be at least four, whatever we can push it to, to keep, and keep it still in the public way, they can go anywhere from four to six feet with that, the pipe that sticks out of the side of the pole at about 10 feet off the ground.
Okay.
So, that's that one. I don't know if you want me to, you want to discuss that one first and continue, or do you want me to talk about the other one?
Yeah, no, let's continue with this one. Let's, let's open it up to the board for questions, if they have any, anything on this particular petition. So we can see now that the guy wires are going to be not on the private property, but on the public way, and not encumbering the sidewalk in any other way, in any additional way than already has been done with the pole.
It appears as though it's on the, the property lines, meaning between two properties, not more on one property than the other, in front of, I'm not saying it right, I think you understand what I'm trying to say, that you didn't put it right in front of somebody's front door, it's between, not on the property, if it's on public way, but it's between the two properties.
Yeah, it's located very close to where the two properties meet, yeah.
That's, you said it better than I, thank you.
Yeah, 113 Middlesex and 54 Third.
I see, okay.
Thank you for putting that up there, makes it a lot easier.
Yeah.
So she was also representative of the property owner here as well?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Attorney, would you like to chime in here? Why don't you come up?
Yeah, okay. No, it's, no, it's this one. It is this one. Yeah. I'm Amy Slade, I represent Helen and Edward Moore and Connie, who are the owners of 54 Third Street. I just, we just found out about this particular plan today. We didn't get notice of this change. As far as we knew, the pole was, or the guy wire was still going to be, they were still trying to get it on our property, we denied the easement, because my clients just didn't want to do it. So I just found out about this today, and I guess our concern is that it really not be on our property, and we do have, that's very wooded there, and so I guess we're worried that this still might affect, is that a real picture of Middlesex Street?
No.
Okay.
What do you mean, no?
Is it? Is it?
It is, with the guy wire sketched in, but yes.
Okay, I see.
Oh, okay, that's totally fake.
It feels like there are more trees, you know, since I've been there recently, there's a lot of our wooded area that is, I think will still be affected by the fact that they've got it, you know, there's a lot of overgrowth, I guess, by us onto, I guess, what may seem like the town property, but really looks like our property, so I guess we just are a little concerned that when they try to put that guy wire in, it still may affect our property and our trees and our shrubs and.
But they won't be allowed to put it on your property.
No, but I guess, I guess our shrubs and trees will be trimmed because.
Have your clients seen this picture?
No, unfortunately, Edward is quite ill and is in hospice, and so Helen is with him. And so, since I just found out about this today, my clients haven't had a chance to look at this at all, because I can't talk to them.
I have a question. Where that pole's going to go, on the Middlesex house, I know, I grew up on Third Street, so I'm very familiar.
Okay, okay, sure.
So, so, but where that pole's going to go, right now, there, isn't there on that, the Middlesex owners, isn't there a, right, isn't that, isn't there a?
There's another house, yeah, right.
Can you scroll down for a moment?
Yeah, 113?
I'm sorry, I don't know. That's Andrew. Andrew, can you scroll down actually, just to refer to that picture, because there's a.
Isn't there a library box right there?
There is, that's not an updated photo, because right up that.
There's a library box right there.
And there's also a fence.
And a fence.
Probably Google Maps photos, a year old, so that it's a real photo.
Yeah, I guess.
I'm not speaking to the vintage of the photo.
I don't, I think the library box is for the folks that live at the yellow house, and, and you can see the fence pole.
Was that what that is? Yeah, it's a library.
Yeah, it's a library box, yeah.
It's pretty big, actually.
It is, it's decorated now, it looks cute.
Yeah, it is too, yeah.
But, but that wouldn't impact that at all, then?
No, I guess not, that feels like it's not on the sidewalk, it feels like it's on their land, but.
Your concerns previously had, had been that.
I mean, that's better than the old way.
Can we just kind of keep it to one question in a sense of?
So, your concerns had previously been, are the concerns of the neighbors, the property of the Marquinhos, was that it was going to be anchored on the property, attached, we had a couple last week, attached to a tree as well?
No, no, this wasn't, it was just going to be the wire, that was going to be on, because originally the pole was on the other side of, was on the inside of the sidewalk, so the guy wire, there's no way that the guy wire wouldn't have been on our property, our, my client's property, and so we had not seen the la, the sketches that were with this the last time, were I think from 2014, they were old, and so we were looking for something new. But in the meantime, I had talked to my clients about whether they wanted to provide the easement at all, they made the decision not to provide the easement at all, and so we then wrote to National Grid, and I think you have copies of my letter to them, just letting them know that they would have to make other plans.
And that's what they've done.
Yes, it's just, we didn't, we never got these plans. I got them online at the town website.
I think that the cure would be, the motion can be specific language that is approved, not only based on the plans, but specific language that the pole and the anchor be placed in the public way as proposed and not on private property.
I, we, obviously, if it's in the public way, we have no choice, just as long as, I guess, we are involved with the placing of the wire to make sure it doesn't encroach onto our, our land, my client's land, and that in the installation process, none of our, our trees or property are damaged by the process.
Well, the angle.
Yes, I know, that's our responsibility. We have to trim them, but I don't know how, you know, but they, in the process of putting it in, my.
Sure, yeah. Well, that's why I want to recommend that the selectmen include in the motion, if they're interested in proceeding, making it clear that what they're approving is in the public way, so there's no confusion of us.
Right, right.
And that's fine, but Mr. Boucher, there's no other way to shore up that pole besides putting another pole and all the guy wires in? I mean, I think, I think we've had this discussion in the past that, you know, we're just adding more infrastructure and more, if you will, you know, more ugliness to the, to support that pole. There's no other way to shore up that pole?
Well, we certainly don't want to have any more assets out there than we need. This is something that is needed with the new cables that'll become, that'll be strung on the poles across the street, and they're heavier, when we run heavier wires, when the load increases in the town, and we go through projects where we're upgrading the system, the poles take more strain. And that's why we need this particular structure to support our wires across the street. There are other ways, a push brace is another resolve, but that would land on private property Not going forward with the project would be another way. There's, there's three answers, so, I mean, it is what it is. If we, if we increase our, if we are allowed to do this, it will enable us to provide electricity in a more reliable way because of the increased demands throughout the town.
Tell me again, what's the longevity of a pole?
I replace poles that are, the oldest ones I've replaced recently might, might be about 80 years old.
Yeah, 80 years old.
Yeah, 1930, you might see some 1930s out there.
So even when they list, you still?
But normally, it's like somewhere in the area around 50 to 80, you know, right in that area, they start getting a little bit old, worn, and they need to be replaced, so, just from my experience, so.
It's in town property, guys, I.
Yeah, I have no issue with it. Move that the Board of Selectmen approve the National Grid poll petition 18128513, Middlesex Street, as presented as on a public way.
Second.
Okay, with motion and second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that one is good?
I'm a no.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, I'm an a, I didn't say that all by.
Okay, so four, four to one on that one. Rosemary, you want to go for that?
I still, I still think it's not particularly attractive over the sidewalk, and I was hoping that you come up with a better solution. I know you have a difficult job.
Okay, then, yes.
He's like, I don't care.
I do care.
I can picture sneakers swinging around the top of that.
I do care, I just look at it like, it is what it is. It's kind of like black and white to me, I don't know, I gave you the.
You're the right guy for this job.
Been here enough times.
So, I've gone to different towns, too, everyone's a little different.
So will you take down the sneakers when they're wrapped around that?
You see those up there on the lines, too, yeah, yeah.
I don't see a lot of North Andovers in that, like, with drug houses.
You see, yeah, it's supposed to be something about drugs, yeah. In Lawrence, you see it, some of the areas.
Move on.
All right, yeah, let's move on to the petition for Johnson Street.
I don't like this one either.
Mr. Boucher, would you like to speak to this one again?
Yeah, this is one that I designed myself.
All right, we have the responsible person. This is going to be the first.
A customer at, I'm going to get the, the street number, resident at, it's on Johnson Street, number 174. There's a tree that is on the property, just at the property line where it meets the street, so we have a guy wire going into, from the pole across the street. Pole across the street, I'm not sure if you got.
We didn't get, I don't think we got pictures for Johnson Street.
I have something I can give you if you didn't get anything.
It's here, right? Right around here?
Oh, you got, you got that, yeah. The tree's a little bit, well, probably, see where the J and Johnson is?
Yeah.
Yeah, a little bit more that way, yeah, somewhere around there, right around the driveway.
On the property of 174 Johnson?
Yeah, just inside. The line you see there is the, the public way and the private property, same with Sutton Hill. The road is, where you see the pole, proposed pole location for the push brace, that's, that's on the side of the road. It's not, it's not in the middle pavement, it's, it's in the grassy area that.
Grassy, no.
But that's, that's one of these.
174 here, across the street.
Across the street, yeah, pole 1341.
So the current wire goes from here, across the street.
Correct. I have something that, I only have four copies.
If you want, you can take a look at this, I don't know if you got this.
Oh, we got that.
This was sent, yeah.
We got that in the fact.
I don't think Rosemary has it on.
There you go, that's right there.
Oh, I'm sorry, I got it, I do have it, I apologize.
Yep.
I was looking for.
So this, this came, can you go back to the part, previous, the previous graphic that showed the number? Because you said you had this set a request of.
So the line runs across the street into the tree in front of the Davis House?
Yeah.
And they've requested that that be removed?
Be removed. And that, and that drawing there, you can see on the top, at 174 Johnson, and there's an arrow going down to the guy wire that goes across the street.
Right.
You can't see what tree it goes into, but you can see the wall there that's on, right in front of the property.
Yeah.
We would have to place our pole, if we were going to do it similar to the Middlesex construction, we'd have to place our pole in front of that wall and land a guy wire into the property. Instead of doing that, I took it upon myself to design it with a, a push brace, as you see, it's, it's sketched in green, approximately 15 feet it would land from the pole, and underneath the existing three-phase wire that's coming in from Sutton Hill Road.
You're a very nice man, but push brace sounds a little antiseptic. What it is, is another telephone pole leaning up to it.
Yes.
Which is not quite as, push brace doesn't.
Doesn't sound as good.
It doesn't sound as bad, but when you say you've got another big telephone pole leaning like this, it's not, it's not nice.
Is this the same plan that was presented to us last?
Yes.
So this is, so for whatever it's worth, so that, we actually appointed the individual fairly recently who lives at 173, behind the wall, and I had reached out to him and I had said, did you know this was happening? We would have loved to have heard from you at the meeting, and he said, he didn't mind, but that his concern, his concern was with the current situation, which is, it's apparently attached to a tree that the neighbors all think is pretty unhealthy to begin with, and so there's that concern that that tree could come down in a storm. I don't know if that, if that helps, but it doesn't sound like the neighbors on either side of this. It sounds like 174 initiated this request, and it sounds like 173 is fine.
Yeah.
Obviously, there's more to it, but I thought that was worth that.
And the tree is somehow.
Yeah, I don't like it.
Well, they probably think it's academic.
Well, there's, exactly what, what I'm asking for here is at the corner of Chestnut and Milk Street, right around the corner from there. I don't know if you've ever gone down Chestnut, where it meets Milk, there's a push brace right there, and it's doing the same, basically the same thing. It's allowing us to run wires down Milk Street off of Chestnut, as opposed to putting a pole across the street with a guy wire and an anchor and a sidewalk fixture like we're doing on Middlesex. There's no, at that particular intersection, there's nothing on the other side, like, once again, we would have had to land an anchor in a private property, which is what we're trying to avoid here, and if you're looking at that sketch that I also drew, there'd be some tree trimming that would need to have to happen for us to place that pole on the same side of the road as 174. So there's kind of two things working against us with that, that idea, and I'm pretty sure that the resident at 174 is not going to want to give us an easement to place anything on their property. It's unfortunate, we just don't have room over there on that other side of the road to do like a regular stub pole, we call them, with an anchor. That's why I want with the, the push brace.
Is that the tree the guy wire's on now?
Uh, it, yeah, it.
Going across the street.
I think you can barely see it, yeah.
Where are you pointing?
It's to the right of the driveway, I believe, or maybe to the left.
Is it that one?
It might be the one to the left, it's just a little bit more, it's almost off screen, yeah, right around there.
I agree.
Yeah.
All right, so, again, I'll ask the question, there's, you have no other way of supporting that pole that's less, as you would say, well, deploying additional assets?
To me, there's, there's three solutions. Leave it where it's at, which is probably not a solution. Put a stub pole or a push brace, and in order to support the wires that exist there, or reroute all our wires some other way down, to get down Sutton Hill Road, which would be all kinds of other construction.
What's the, what's a stub pole? What do you mean by that?
Stub pole, yeah.
Oh, stub pole, so a pole up against the original pole is?
Nope, nope, stub pole is like what we have on Middlesex Street, what we just passed.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha.
Yeah.
No, so wouldn't be a duplicate pole, another pole pushing up, side by side?
No, what I'm asked for in this case is a push brace, which is another pole just.
So what is the, what's the stub pole?
It's like what they just did on the other one, where they had another pole across the street and a guy wire going to it and went down, but he's, he's saying, so this is the pole, this is the pole, and then the stub pole would be the one across the street with the guy wire going down, but he doesn't have the room to do that.
But that would be on private property.
Right.
Yeah, the anchor would end up landing on private property, which totally, I mean, I didn't even go there with this, that, doing that as a design.
Maybe, maybe the people would prefer an anchor versus this, I don't know.
But it would be on, it would be across the street on the Davis property that they don't want the.
And there's trees there, too, that, I mean, would have substantial trimming.
And we, we spoke about it pretty publicly.
I mean, I haven't, I'm just curious, somebody had a better, people reached out to neighbors, reached out, oh, they haven't reached out to me, so I don't.
I yelled at them.
If they had to be unpacked, if they came through.
Formal route.
Thank you, okay, moved at the, can we move forward? Are we done? Are we still talking?
I've got all my questions answered.
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve National Grid poll petition 22825255, Johnson Street is presented.
Second.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
No.
Four to one.
Go back to the drawing board and start to figure out a better way to make this look better.
Thank you.
Okay.
Down underground and state wide.
Underground, that would solve a lot of...
And it would save money in the end.
We're an old town, though. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your patience again.
We have no new business, public comment? We only have one member of the public, no public comment? All right, thank you, sir. Town manager report, any ask the manager questions?
The first time.
And, okay, you're the balance of the day, okay.
So...
Okay, hold on, all right, let's get in the queue again. Selectmen to Call Zero does have a question.
So, like, sorry, Mr. Town Manager, now that you're eager, oh, I didn't even realize the time, but I just wanted to ask, so I had had conversations with our two-state legislator, two-state reps, Jim Lyons and Diana DeZoglio, and...
We have to speak up.
So I had had two conversations with our two, our two-state reps, not our state senators, but our two-state reps, just about what their priorities are for the coming legislative session, and we had talked about how at one point, not while I've been on the board, that they used to come and meet with us and discuss what their priorities were, and then also solicit feedback from us, and I know that even earlier this evening, there was a potential suggestion that we may have, that we'd want them to pursue.
Maybe, too, we might talk about polls?
We talked about doing that after the first year, since there was an election cycle going on. Didn't make sense when it was November, I assumed that given the elections, everybody needed a deep breath, and given our licensing and other requirements this month, I assumed that they would come at some meeting during January.
So we haven't done that since you've been on the board?
No, we haven't.
That's what I said.
It's been two years, it was, it might have been 14.
And it's the start of the legislative session, so if there were legis, if there was legislation that we wanted to ask them to pursue, there's, there's a window that they need to submit it by in January anyways, and so...
Well, let's get them on the agenda for right after the holiday.
Yeah, I think that's common, and normally what we'll do is when they reach out to us with a standard correspondence, this follows a pretty standard practice, they will reach out to us, usually not all of them, one of the senators and one of the reps will say, "Is there anything that's of interest?" And typically what I'll do is I'll send off an email and find out if there's any particular items, and then we'll reinforce those, obviously, when they come back in January. But if they communicate, they typically communicate with us, we'll then reach out to you to find out if there's a particular interest, and then we communicate that back to the legislative delegation, and we have, in every year, provided them a letter on behalf of the board that identifies priorities.
I mean, and prior, I mean, this is going back, but I know that Tracy and Rosemary, you can remember, I mean, there used to be FinCom School Committee members, whole group meetings with them, just to make sure that they were aware of...
Those weren't always productive.
I imagine they weren't, so...
One thing I learned from that guy is tell him it's kind of time to sky...
No, they weren't bad, they weren't always productive.
But the alternative is then that they say that they don't hear from us, not that they've ever made that claim, but it seems like, you know, both are willing, I mean, to work, I mean, both of our state reps anyways are willing to work.
I haven't realized, we hadn't seen them in a while, but we normally do get them on the agenda.
I think because they're such active members in the community, that it feels as though it hasn't been that long.
Yeah, and we did get a new sign on 495.
I was like, I see all of them all the time, so, so often, rather, that it, I didn't realize it had been that long.
It was the fall of 14.
And it's good probably to get all of them because they don't, the four of them don't share any other communities, so if we're not initiating it, then the four of them aren't necessarily, aren't necessarily, although I'm sure that they do, but there's no, I mean, it probably is helpful then for them as well.
Yeah, I know, it's great, I know, it was always good in the past.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, hold on, all right, we got a motion to adjourn. Our next, wait, our next meeting is December 19th. We have a motion on the table to adjourn, do we have a second?
I still wanted to, one more, one more question. And Tracy, this is something we've been dealing with, that's why...
Hold on, all right, so, hold on, we got a motion, a second, you have, you have comment, go ahead.
Well, I still, I wasn't, I wasn't ready to move beyond the prior, so, we've, we've been getting quite a few text messages, at least Tracy and I, about leaf pickup in town, and I was contacted...
Yeah, it's not pretty out there. Two ninety on Sutton Street, you pick up.
No, if you just drive around, it's just rows and rows.
Sutton Street.
So it would be very helpful through the reported system or through direct dialogue with me for the board, it is the first I'm hearing from this.
Here's my complaint about that statement, and, and you know I love you, that came off very, very aggressive.
Very aggressive.
I didn't mean that to come off like that.
It doesn't, it can't talk.
That the residents should not have to report anything when we, as a community, have told them over and over and over again, the week of the 28th, the week of this, the week of that, the week of that.
Things get missed.
No, 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 no.
Things get missed.
Things get missed, with all due respect, Dick, when you put out from the very first week on Sutton Street, not one of those bags has been picked up since the first week, that's not, things get missed, that's bad service to the community by a company that I think is...
My point is not, my point is not...
For five weeks, it got missed?
I don't know, Tracy, I haven't been tracking it yet.
That's what I'm saying, that's my point, is I am tracking it, so that, that's...
Not by choice, we are on a...
But not by choice, we are tracking it, that's my point. If we continually tell the residents, it's coming, they're coming this week, oh, I'm sorry, they didn't come this week, oh, they're coming this week, oh, I'm sorry, they didn't come this week.
Hold on, hold on, first of all, it was ask the manager, I haven't heard a question. We own that, we're not on a phone...
I haven't been able to get it out, they wanted to adjourn.
But I would say the following.
He's getting on, we let him go.
It is not good in terms of communication from either my staff, or the board, or anyone else, that this is the first time I've heard of it. All I'm saying is...
That's not true, stop.
It is the first, it's not the first time I've heard about leaves?
You haven't heard complaints about, about leaf pickup, about recycling?
I mean, this, no, 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 I don't mean, I don't, no, I don't, I mean, that's what we're talking about.
But today's Monday.
And I'm gonna say, for instance, Commander, I've not asked you that until...
Can we just have one conversation going on?
One conversation. My, my point is this, is that, I'm not talking about the trash contract in perpetuity, we've already notified the trash contractor, they're not renewing the contract, we're working to get another contract, we should have information for you within the next 30 days. That's that question. As it relates to any information, whether it's leaves, or whether it's a dead animal, or anything else, communication to the departments is essential for us to fix problems when they arise. That's all I'm saying.
I understand that, Andrew, that when you have residents...
So what do we do, if we don't get communication, we just...
This was my question, I didn't ask my question.
They constantly calling DPW, being told, "They're coming, they're coming, they're[1552.16]